Two, one. Good evening. Welcome to the February 3rd City Council meeting. I am Jim Nash. I am the City Council President and I will be presiding this evening. This meeting and all participating on Zoom will be audio and video recorded. Tonight, we are operating once again under our new rules and we will be doing things a little different than in previous years. We will first convene the meeting before we take public comment. I now call the City Council to order. City Clerk Powers, can you please call the roll?
Absolutely. Counselor Elkins.
Present.
Counselor Foster.
I'm present.
Counselor Gore.
Present.
Counselor Jarrett.
Here.
Counselor LaBarge.
Here.
Counselor Maori.
Here.
Counselor Morton. Walton.
Present.
Counselor Nash.
Here.
Counselor Perry.
Here and present.
Okay, everybody's here. That's great. Um, now, yes?
Put co-host beside my name, please.
Yes, I will take care of that.
Thank you.
My apologies.
Not a problem.
Okay. Now that we are convened, we will take public comment. If you wish to make a public comment, please use the raise hand feature. The raise hand feature is in the bottom menu bar under reactions. If you are calling by phone, you can raise your hand by hitting star nine. If you are having trouble raising your hand, you may use the chat feature to send a message to me. To ensure equal access and because of the open meeting law, technical problems such as not being able to raise your hand are the only thing the chat function is used for. And the chat function will only be available during public comment. Oh, yeah. I am sorry. Let's set record. And. And Karen, can you enable transcripts?
It shows, it shows to me that it's been enabled.
Okay, all right, great. Um, we cannot accept comment over chat. Private chat or chat only visible on Zoom during a public meeting is antithetical to an open public process in violation of the council rules for public participation and violates the spirits and potentially the, the law of open meeting law. If you want to submit a written public comment, please email it to citycouncil@northampton.gov and it will be sent to all counselors and will be part of the public record. I will unmute each raised hand in the order raised to make a comment. Before you begin, please state your name and your city or town for the public record. To ensure everyone has an equal opportunity to speak, the council limits comments to two minutes. You are in no way obligated to use the full two minutes, but if you do, after two minutes, I will ask you to please finish your sentence. Tonight, we will also be trying out a new timer which will appear in the Zoom screen to help track the two minutes. We, we have heard from Mayor Shara in the past, it hasn't been effective. So if it's not, we will disable it. According to city, to council rules, we do not respond during public comment as it is your time to speak. So while your comments should be directed to us, you will understand when we don't respond. Our rules also state that counselors and members of the public shall conduct, conduct themselves with civility and respect at all times. Your protected speech is a constitutional right and one that we ask you to wield with consideration and respect for all and with recognition that the public space that grants you that freedom is shared equally by everyone. Also, according to open meeting law, if someone is disrupting a meeting, they may be removed. You may speak on any topic. It doesn't need to be on an item on the agenda. I ask that all but the council turn off your video until called upon. Only the person recognized has the floor and all comments are to be directed to the council. The meeting can also be watched on Channel 15 or by streaming it on Northampton Open Media's YouTube and other platforms. So, um, we will now open public comment and the first person on the list is Christina. And we'll see if we can get Christina here.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Um, good evening, council members and members of the public. My name is Christina Carvalho and I am a resident of Brookline, Massachusetts. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight in support of the resolution calling on student debt cancellation by executive order. I am the Policy and Community Organizing Director at Zero Debt Massachusetts. We are a grassroots organization of intergenerational activists fighting for student borrowers' protection, the cancellation of student debt, reinvestment in higher ed in Massachusetts, and an overall debt-free higher ed system. So our mission is to organize and amplify the voices and leadership of those most disproportionately impacted by the burden of student debt, which includes students of color, low-income and middle-class students, first-gen college students like myself and students in rural communities. Specifically in Massachusetts, right now, there is over 870,000 student loan borrowers holding a total of $35.9 billion in student debt, making the monthly average about $400 a month. And since the pandemic has begun, there's been a 40% increase in Massachusetts older adults and seniors owing debt as well. So canceling the second highest household debt would, would do wonders for the Massachusetts residents. It would allow households to put money towards stimulating and boosting their local economies. And a lot of life milestones that have been delayed would get to be, you know, people would get to do these things such as starting their own families, owning their home. It's time to rectify this economic, racial, and gender justice issue. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing and tolerating that bell. Up is S. Clark Banker.
Hey, everyone. So my name is Clark and I am a resident currently of East Hampton. I'm actually here tonight in my capacity as the Senior Manager of Community Inclusion Strategies at the Collaborative for Educational Services. And I just want to voice my support for the resolution to form a select committee to study barriers to service on city boards and commissions. So the reason I support this is because I work on an initiative we are calling redesigning power structures. Our goal is to increase representation and power in decision-making for people most impacted by health inequities. And I am aware of many conversations over the years with regards to the need to increase equity and inclusion for people on boards and committees in Northampton. I have been a part of some of those conversations. And in my work at CES in Healthy Hampshire, we have heard over and over again how important financial and other types of support are to people's ability to be involved in initiatives, you know, over time, over the long term. I have seen firsthand how that support can help people feel honored in their service and able to more fully participate in programs. So I really hope that this committee, if formed, will be able to tackle some tough questions such as do people from historically marginalized or underrepresented groups in Northampton have what they need in order to serve? If they do choose to serve, and if not, what do they need? What do the people who already served benefit from? And how can we provide those same supports or advantages to everyone? What duty do we have to address historical and current marginalization, marginalization of certain groups? How can we support people's service and see it as part of building a positive career around public service and civic engagement? And finally, how can we redesign our power structure so they actually serve everyone? If the committee is created, I look forward to forming a partnership of some kind and to explore these questions. Thank you for taking my comment tonight.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Kathy McNally.
Hi, everybody. It's Kathy McNally. I am in Ward One, Northampton, and I'm writing because I'm super duper concerned about the proposal to get the watch guard tech surveillance technology. I hope that you will be Northampton's watch guard city council and vote to delay. I, I think it's clear you need more study. I've learned a lot from reading a lot in the past several days about police technology and the way that police accountability benefit is really overstated. And the peril to our privacy and to already oversee obscenely over policed black and brown people is dangerously understated. I believe it's more than just a simple upgrade, a replacement, nothing to see here, folks, routine budget issue. We know that police surveillance technology is exploding faster than regulations can keep up. You can see this, and if you just Google surveillance technology and regulations, you'll see the issue. We understand that data can be misused for purposes the approvers, you guys, tonight never would intend. That's why I think a vote tonight to prove, to approve it is premature, unnecessary, and unconscious, unconscious. I'm particularly concerned, though, that the city, even though we know the city, we're, we've been assured they're not going to access facial or license plate in info. I believe that a federal agency like ICE or the FBI can get the local police to give them data and then they, the federal agency, can access the data that we can't from it. And in a sense, it seems like we're merely banking all this data in a huge murky cloud. So please delay approval. Thanks. I'm done.
All right, hold on a second, folks. Counselor LaBarge got bumped out, so.
Okay.
My apologies. Counselor LaBarge had some difficulties and got bumped out of the meeting and I'm hoping she can get back in. Okay, next up is Jessie Hassinger.
Thank you very much. My name is Jessie Hassinger, Ward Four. For consideration regarding the watch guard Motorola AI software that the NPD has indirectly asked for undercover of IT Director Antonio Pagan, I urge all counselors to vote against this tonight. One of the aspects of this program is facial recognition software, which has been proven by numerous years-long studies and extensive data to be racially biased against black and brown people. Beyond this inherent racial bias, the use of this technology throughout the world has been levered against black and brown people overwhelmingly. Police surveillance technology was used to exonerate the violent white supremacist Kyle Rittenhouse on the one hand, but to justify the murder of Tamir Rice, a 12-year-old black child, on the other. Motorola Solutions and other police tech companies have a history of aiding ICE, both by holding active contracts with ICE and through providing local police departments with technology, which is then used to feed information to ICE. Motorola Solutions has been identified by the UN Human Rights Office of Commissioner as a company involved in providing surveillance and identification equipment in the occupied Palestinian territories, including East Jerusalem and the Golan Heights. All of this information and more, including links and relevant data, was sent to the counselors who cover my ward, Garrick Perry, along with Marissa Elkins and Jamila Gore. But tonight, I want to address everyone by saying that a yes vote about this technology is a turn away from the BIPOC communities who live, work, and spend time in the city. Instead, it is an affirmation to uphold white supremacy. A yes vote is saying that the hard-fought surveillance camera request that was made years ago and was voted down was all in vain, that we are now okay with having our communities surveilled and surveilled in such a way that feeds directly into ICE and the occupying forces of dictatorships around the world. A yes vote on this technology will be noted and remembered as an unequivocal step away from the sanctuary city status that we have generally taken as the complete right thing to do and instead turn us towards a conservative outlook on immigration and law and order. Politics that has produced a country that imprisons more people than any other country in the world. I see my time is up, even though I didn't hear anything, so I will stop.
Okay, there was, there was a timer. I can turn the volume up.
Okay, next up is Jasper.
Hi, hello. I'm Jasper. I live in Ward Three. I'm also concerned about the budget request to provide the police department with the watch guard program for multiple reasons. First of all, I'm concerned about the program itself because the nature of police surveillance technology is that it's often leveraged to further criminalize people of color and poor people. But the primary point I want to present to the council is that I think that the way that this was presented, like the request was presented to the city council was not transparent and it hasn't given constituents enough time to voice their opinions on the matter. And I know that the city council has not been given enough time to research the program and to understand the problematic nature of police surveillance technology and the appropriate people to reach out to, such as people who are in the Policing Review Commission. We're not contacted as far as I know. And I think that all of that needs to happen before a decision is made about whether or not to purchase it. I believe that it would be wrong to purchase it and I hope that the council will vote no on the matter. But I believe that they certainly, certainly, certainly need more time to come to a conclusion and tonight is not the night to do it. Because the research hasn't been done. Thank you.
Thank you, Jasper. Next up is Dan Kennedy. Welcome.
Hi, everybody. I will try and keep this really close to under two minutes. So my name is Dan Kennedy. I live in Ward Four B. I wrote an email to you all yesterday and I hope you had a chance to sort of read that. I'm just going to focus on a couple of the things in there. But really, I'm just here to push that, to ask that you push this back to committee to discuss it more and to be able to really answer and articulate, or to answer some of the questions that I'm going to try and articulate. Anytime you're moving service to cloud storage, there are some big questions to ask, including who has access to the data, who owns that data that's there, how long is it preserved, where it's going to be shared, and I'm not sure that we have a really good answer on that. I think it's really great that Northampton still has the, our resolution to prevent surveillance. But Motorola and the company that they acquired to do all of this vigilant has in the past overridden local, local laws and local ordinances and shared data that wasn't meant to be shared and that the communities did not ask them to share. So I think it's very important that we be able to answer who's going to make sure that doesn't happen in our case and who's going to take responsibility if it does. I think the other part of this that gets really tricky is that Motorola even has technology so that if an officer turns off their camera, it can still record. Motorola, Motorola calls it record after the fact, but they don't have magic to do it. It just means it's passively recording. And so I think those sort of things are dangerous because then if an officer is not in charge of it, if the community is not in charge of it and Motorola is still recording, that we have a real problem with that. So I think answering all those questions is going to be difficult. It's going to take some time, but I think before you move on that we should have that and it should be communicated to everyone so they know what's happening in the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dan. Next up is Amy Bookbinder. Welcome, Amy.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have the floor.
Okay, thank you. And hello to everybody. I'm in Ward Seven in Northampton. First, I want to thank the mayor and the city council for taking a stand against antisemitism and hate speech in our city. At the same time, limiting our speech at these meetings through the new city council rules that limit our comments to only two minutes and cap the public comment period is, in my opinion, regrettable and should be reversed. Having said that, I'm opposed also to the financial order before you tonight that would align our sanctuary city with the nefarious Motorola Solutions and Watch Guard program. As Attorney Rachel Weber made clear on the Bill Newman Show this morning, attempts by our, by our or any city to limit sharing of video or data with ICE or other law enforcement agencies cannot guarantee protection because state and federal requests for information take precedence legally over city ordinances or any attempts to deny the information. In other words, cities must comply with state and federal requests for information. Excuse me. As a sanctuary city in a state that still denies driver's licenses to undocumented people, many of them essential workers, helping us all get through this pandemic, already putting themselves at risk, we must not put them in more danger of deportation or other terrible consequences that often result from traffic stops or other racial profiling, that sharing info with ICE or other parties aids and abets. Northampton must not allow that to pretend.
Thank you, Amy.
Vote, please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Kaylee.
Hi there. My name is.
Kaylee, you have the floor.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. My name is Kaylee Brow. I'm a resident of Amherst, but I was born and raised in Northampton and have lived in the valley my whole life. I'm calling also to voice my concerns about the budget plan before you to sign a five-year contract with Motorola Solutions. I was pretty surprised to hear about it even. It feels as though the constituents of Northampton have made it clear that we don't want to be surveilled and that we don't want ICE in our community. And it feels like we're, it would be really jumping ahead to just sign onto this five-year contract and sign over a bunch of money to a company that we know works with ICE. I think that Northampton needs to move away from increasing the police budget and also increasing surveillance of our community. And I just think that there is a lot of other things that we could spend $133,000 on that would actively support and uplift our community and wouldn't be actively harming our community. I encourage, I think that you should vote no on this. I encourage you to at least take more time to get some answers. I'm hearing a lot of questions and concerns from folks tonight. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Next up is Shelby. Welcome.
Hi.
Hello, Shelby, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Shelby, you have the floor.
Awesome. Um, my name is Shelby Lee and I receive weekly medical care services in Northampton. I'm a resident of East Hampton. Updating, recording, and surveillance systems to surveil residents and visitors is not a step forward for this community, its safety, or its privacy. I personally have been detained and questioned by a DEA agent as a 17-year-old and a junior in high school in my Western Massachusetts hometown because of this type of surveillance. This information was largely based on my driving habits because I lived very close to two state orders. They truly believed I was a large-scale drug supplier. No matter how much money and software go into this type of intelligence, it's not directly applicable. No matter how much money and software go into this type of intelligence, it's not directly applicable to the complexities of real people living their day-to-day lives and a huge waste of time and resources do go into following false patterns of information collected via surveillance. In 2022, living through a housing crisis, a pandemic, a climate crisis, the list goes on. We should not be wasting our time and resources on surveilling our community. Please consider not voting to approve this update to the recording and surveillance systems. Um, I'm also gonna let you know that I'm gonna raise my hand again so that my partner can speak. Thanks.
Thank you, Kaylee. Okay, I, I just wanna let everybody know, we have a hard cap on ninety minutes and, um, that of public comment. And I will stop talking so you guys can continue to have the floor. Jose Adostra. Are you there, Jose?
Uh, yeah, can you hear me?
Welcome. You have the floor, Jose.
Hello, um, I live in Holyoke now. We're just still moving out of Northampton. And, uh, it would be, it would be wildly hypocritical and it would be terrible. It would be unimaginably terrible of you to stand up for antisemitism and then to give the police and ICE information on minorities that live in this area. It's, it's all, it's proven beyond a reasonable doubt that these systems discriminate against black and brown people. There, uh, for the past couple of years, people have been coming up to you, hundreds of people for, for hundreds of hours, telling you to take away powers from the, from the Northampton Police, to take away, to, to, to i- implement some system of accountability, to fire Robert Powers, to fire Andrew Cole, to get rid of Borowski, people that have abused their intimate partners, people that have restraining orders against them, people that have assaulted judges, people that have assaulted homeless people of color on the street, people who have assaulted pe- uh, people for having suspended license. But guess what? None of that has happened. You made a Department of Community Care and there has been no accountability. How could you possibly think of supplying these people who are eager to work with ICE and happy to work with ICE, who have not been reprimanded or held? Think about considering giving them another tool so that at the end of the day, the, the dash cams, all that that does is that that records a video of them murdering me. That's it. That it just, it, it's just on video. And, and when, when it, when it comes to trial, there, it's dismissed. So really, you're just, it's just on video so my kids can see it, right? So our families can watch us get executed. And then at the trial, it's that against us to dismiss the case. Please try to find some sort of dignity to hold on to and, and vote for people with less privilege than yourself.
Thank you, Jose. Okay, next up is Dana Goldblatt. Welcome, Dana. And we'll give it another try here. Dana?
I think, can you hear me now? It looks like it's-
Yeah, I got you in here.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, I'm here to also speak on the Motorola, uh, purchase. Uh, and I'm speaking as a criminal defense attorney because I know it is so tempting to see this as, and to see surveillance that we perceive as surveillance of police to be somehow helpful to people who are facing civil rights violations or facing abuse by police. And it doesn't work. Now, I, like every other criminal defense attorney, have had that, like, one or two cases where you blew the case wide open and showed that the police lied and attacked the homeless guy or lied about what everyone was doing. Nobody was threatening them and they just came in waving their batons, beating heads and it was, you know, proved it. And honestly, it doesn't make much of a difference. Most of the time, it does not affect the outcome when you get those videos. Police testify that all of the bad stuff happened off camera or just out of view. Judges credit the police and in some cases, that's not even necessary. There's not even an explanation of the discrepancy. There's just a statement by the judges that they credit the police officer testifying and things go on just as if there was no smoking gun video. This is the day-to-day of the criminal justice system. I credit the police officer is the standard line. It doesn't matter if you get video. And we all saw this play out in various trials recently of famous police abuses. There's also, when you're, when you are the entity that's buying this equipment and you're saying, well, we need it not for, uh, criminal and justice enforcement. When it's not because it's helpful for putting people into prisons, we need it to keep an eye on our police officers. Because otherwise, they commit civil rights abuses. What you're saying is that you're gonna spend six million dollars on police and then another six hundred thousand or sixty thousand or whatever it is to try to prevent what you know the police are gonna do, which is illegal.
Thank you, Dana.
This is not an effective way of dealing with that problem. So I would suggest that surveillance of police is not an effective way of reining in police abuses.
Thank you, Dana. Okay, next up is Jeff Napolitano.
Hi. I live on Burt's Bit Road here in Northampton and I'm here to talk about the order for the five-year contract, uh, on police dash cams. I'm not necessarily asking you to vote this contract down outright, um, but I have to say, the more I try to understand what it is that you're voting on, the less clear it is. Um, I haven't been able to actually see the contract in question as it doesn't seem to have been included in the documents available to the public, which, given what it covers, is a bit concerning. Um, so as a general principle of good governance, uh, of not approving something that you've never seen, I'd urge you to take, undertake further review. Um, I'm especially concerned that this is the contract with Motorola, which is a company that already has, one, notably lobbied the US government to allow for sharing of people's information without their consent. And two, has already been cited as a source of transfer of information to the federal government. The content covered by this contract, uh, which is obscured in an agenda item that doesn't even mention exactly what it's used for, is that of the images and the records of people, um, people's cars and whatever else is picked up by cameras, um, which is pretty serious stuff. This isn't twenty years ago when we don't know about the impacts of mass surveillance. We know that for quite some time that many, many instances of private companies spying on people and sharing it with the government about fusion centers, where everything a police department does gets directly and digitally funneled to Washington DC. We know about these dangers. In Northampton, we wrote a couple of ordinances around them, which at first glance would almost certainly be violated by this contract. So I'm simply asking that you follow the same precautions that Northampton parents and consumers follow in this digital age. That if you're going to trust this company with the images and records of the people in this city, then you need to look very, very closely at what you're signing up for and what you're also signing away. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. Next up is looks like Nico. Yeah, it's Nico. You have the floor.
Hello, everyone. I'm a Northampton Ward one resident here to ask you to vote against the spending proposal for a five-year contract with Motorola for watchdog. So I believe that rather than spending money on policing, Northampton would do better by its residents to prioritize the following while defunding and gradually replacing the police department. One, housing the unhoused. Two, creating an affordable housing base. Three, expanding public transportation. Four, expanding harm reduction services such as substance use recovery, domestic violence recovery and non-carceral mental health emergency response and recovery. Five, innovating what transformative justice looks like at the scale of a small city. Furthermore, I oppose in general on political grounds, any notion of patronizing Motorola Solutions, a company which facilitates and profits from state repression around the world. Just two notable examples include Motorola's collaborations with ICE here in the United States and with the IDF in Israel, Palestine. So please vote no. Please stop spending money on policing and think about what a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars could do for folks who could not ever, ever imagine seeing that kind of money for themselves or even their families. Thanks.
Thank you, Nico. Next up is Alisa Klein. Welcome, Alisa.
Good evening, councilors. Thanks for your service to our community. Um, I'm Alisa Klein from Leeds and, um, I'd like to ask you to pull out the consent adj- pull out of the consent agenda the dashboard cams order and send it to committee for study. My concern is that the city is spending money on a flawed reform measure for the police. And I know that the conventional thinking on dashboard cams for police is that the cameras, you know, quote, keep them accountable. And if that's how you justify this purchase, I suggest that you ask yourselves, why are these expensive police reform measures to keep police accountable necessary in the first place? And, um, I'd like to suggest that it's because of the structure and system of policing as we know it is flawed and dangerous and often deadly for black and brown people in particular. Um, and that's the reason, I think, why we keep spending money on extensive and very expensive measures to, you know, quote unquote, keep police accountable. But really, why do we throw money at a deeply flawed structure like policing that's so dangerous to our community instead of putting that money towards making viable the alternatives to policing that are safer and more compassionate and more sensible? This community had the courage to recognize the need for a non-police-centered response to situations of harm with the Department of Community Care. So I'd like to suggest that we put every available dollar, not towards policing, but towards building up a successful Department of Community Care and things like providing housing to unhoused folks and not towards propping up a system of policing that endangers so many people. So please, councilors, take your time with this one. Send it to committee for close examination. Do the due diligence of actually looking at the actual content of the proposed contract and give your constituents more time to weigh in. Anything having to do with policing, especially allotment of funding, needs extra due diligence on your part. Thanks.
Thank you, Alisa. Next up is David Crisp.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Welcome, David.
Hey, thank you. Um, so I'll just make my point, uh, short here because I know chime in here. And I'm here to speak about the con- solutions. I just think fundamentally, the way this entire thing has happened has been deeply flawed and deeply troubling. Dear lack of community input from the get-go about this. And, and the city councilors, they themselves did not reach out to constituents or expert, uh, opinion about complicated as this Motorola contract is. Um, and so I would vote no. And again, I just, I think it's we have our new limits on public comment. It's very troubling. There's this entire conversation to a very opaque way, almost in the cover of the night. Um, yeah, that's all I really want. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next up is Rachel Weber. Oh, halted. Oops, moved around. Did I just, alright, here, give it another try. Rachel.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, thanks so much. Thank you. Um, and good, good evening to everybody here. Um, I'm here tonight to express my opposition, um, to the, um, any advancement of a contract between the city and Motorola Solutions. Um, and I'm here, uh, in, in two capacities. First is my capacity as a criminal defense attorney and second as my capacity as a, a Jewish-American person. So the first is that as a defense attorney, what I can tell you is that, um, the, you know, um, this type of surveillance, even if, even if the facial recognition and the uh, license plate scanning isn't specifically enabled, it's still gonna make it much easier for agencies to collaborate with each other to continue to over-police, uh, uh, black and brown communities to continue the systemic white supremacy that impacts every system that, um, that touches, uh, criminal justice, ICE, things like that. Whenever the state is able to collect more information about its citizens, it ends up being filtered through those, uh, historical realities. And, um, so that's, that's a huge problem. Another thing is that, as, as I, as noted before, there's no way that Northampton could possibly, uh, make put limitations on what the state and federal government can request. So essentially, so that there's simply nothing that Northampton can do that would assure that information that it gathers isn't then provided to, um, state or federal authorities who then can just run their own facial recognition software on things. And that happens all the time in cities. Um, and so that's, that's, that's another huge problem. Why make it easier to be compatible with, uh, agencies which will, um, further persecute our, our citizens? Um, and the thing is, even if there is video, it's still up for interpretation, either in front of a judge or in front of a jury, and interpretation is where implicit bias comes in. Well, I didn't get to mention that, uh, Motorola is literally on a UN watch list for its human rights abuses, um, in Israeli settlements in Palestine. And the thought of this city making an additional contract with them is unconscionable.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Spencer. Spencer, are you with us here? Okay, there you are. You have the floor.
Mark Peterson, uh, I'm a resident of Holyoke, but I work out of Northampton and I have lived in Northampton. And, um, very close to the community. Uh, I just wanna say I co-sign pretty much probably better than I could say with a lot more. What I can say is fine, this is a hard no. Anytime hard no. Like, what are we doing there? Why would we do that to ourselves? There's creeping fascism. Fascism, whatever you wanna call it, it's part of American culture. We need to just look it straight in the eye and we need to fight it here at home. And how we fight that is by not giving bad actors, class traitors, the police none. And what everybody else is saying, the federal government still get their hands on it. We can't ensure safety of our communities. So as a citizen of Holyoke, where we have real problems with our police department above beacon, progressive beacon on the hill, Northampton, up the road is doing this. It does. They, there's an, I argue there's an active gentrification of Puerto Rican people in policing. And if you guys hold up your end of the bargain, you're, you're really making it hard for your, your community down the road. So please, don't go down this road. Don't allow it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Will Meyer. Welcome, Will.
Uh, thanks, Jim. Uh, thanks for having me. Uh, my name is Will Meyer. I'm one of the co-editors at the shoestring, uh, along with my colleague Jules Marsh. We did the original story about the Motorola surveillance. And, uh, I, I did a public records request for the contract. I still have not received the contract yet, so I just wanna, you know, uh, urge, urge those listening to, uh, please, uh, send, uh, that contract over, uh, to the shoestring so we can read it and, um, report on it for the rest of the community. I would also, uh, love to hear from others who have read the report on it for the rest of the community. I would also love to hear from others who have read the contract. I am not sure who has read the contract. But I think, yeah, I think we need to understand better what's in it to understand what this technology does. And I think that would be a good thing for the community to know. Thank you for your time. And, you know, thank you also to Mayor Chiara for talking to me on Monday and, you know, getting me some information about this. And I think that that was a great start and we need more. So thanks a lot.
Thank you, Will. Okay, next up is Elliot.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. You have the floor.
Great, thanks so much. Please start my time now. My name is Elliot. I am in Holyoke right now. I work currently as an immigration advocate. So I'm speaking to this potential Motorola contract from that perspective.
Recording in progress.
So we're recording. So what a lot of folks, especially Dan Kennedy, have brought up really clearly what actually a contract with Motorola might look like in terms of data sharing with ICE. What I want to highlight is not actually what the contract might entail, but what message it sends to people when you sign this contract. So right now in Northampton, in your community, there are people who live in terror of ICE every day. They're making decisions about their schooling, about their work, about their families, about their children, about their health, about their physical safety, about their ability to leave an abusive situation with a background understanding of constant terror of ICE surveillance and being targeted by that agency. You know this because Northampton purports to be a sanctuary city. So when the city signs a contract that has any mention of data sharing with ICE, much less the extensive level of data sharing that this contract would actually entail, it puts those people in intense fear. It says that your community is not safe. That's not an acceptable thing for a sanctuary community to do. In addition, as an immigration activist, I want to highlight that ICE is actually part of a department called Department of Homeland Security. Department of Homeland Security famously being the federal department that teargassed US citizens in the streets of Portland a couple of years ago. DHS regularly surveils activists of all kinds. When you have a data sharing with federal agencies, it's not just immigrants that need to be afraid. It's anyone who is doing anything that can be undermined by federal surveillance. And the last thing I want to note is that currently the ACLU of Massachusetts, I'll finish my sentence. Currently the ACLU of Massachusetts is coming down really hard on federal face recognition technology. So I want to question why Northampton might sign an expensive contract that is quite possibly about to become unconstitutional. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Elliot. Next up is Ashwin. Welcome, Ashwin.
Hello, everybody. My name is Ashwin Ravi Kumar and I live in Amherst. I teach at Amherst College. And I just first want to point out at the top that I think that the previous 48 minutes of this meeting were not recorded. So it will be good for those tuning in by recording to know that we just had 48 minutes of people who are like me speaking against the Motorola Solutions deal with the Northampton Police. So I strongly urge you to reject this technology and delay voting on it because it violates Northampton's ordinance banning facial recognition technology, regardless of what the NPD says they'll do with it. It runs counter to the Northampton Policing Review Commission's recommendation that we need to reduce the size, scope, and power of the Northampton Police. And it distracts us from building alternatives that really keep people safe. So let's be really clear. Promises from the NPD, even if backstopped by nice municipal ordinances, will ultimately buckle to ICE's federal prerogatives as they have elsewhere in the country, right? So to uphold the spirit of the Northampton Policing Review Commission's recommendations, like Kaylee and others have pointed out earlier, the funds that go to Police Tech Now should be used instead for community care, housing the unhoused, hiring staff dedicated to climate justice, or any number of things that people who have been harmed by police want, rather than what the police want. So I volunteer to support people who are in ICE detention to pay bonds and to get attorneys and secure legal representation. And right now we are seeing detention steadily rise from pre-COVID lows under Trump, surprisingly, to levels starting to approach again pre-COVID levels. Motorola Solutions works with ICE and regardless of municipal laws, federal law gives ICE access to this kind of data. And I shudder to think what that could do to people in Northampton who are in the same situation as people who I talk to every week that are dealing with the horrible treatment that ICE does to people. Joe Biden's ICE is no less brutal than Trump's. Under Obama, we saw ICE expand its power in a way that Trump used for the most excessively brutal programs that he ran, like child separation. And I think that we need to imagine, unpleasant as it is, that Trump wins the election in November 2024. If that happens, will you be happy that Northampton decided to give this technology to the police under that federal administration or any federal administration? Thank you.
Thank you, Ashwin. Next up is Gwyneth Perra. Go.
I'm just hello, my name is Gwynne Badde and I'm here today. Well, I was just stopping in really, and I want to thank everyone for taking the time to listen and consider all sides. I'd like, I have to say, I was surprised to read a blurb in the paper about cameras going onto police cars. You know, I know that where I live in Ward One, the police come through here every day. They drive through every day just because, you know, I live in public housing and people have situations. But as somebody who doesn't have a situation, I'm not really interested in having my neighborhood monitored like that. And I know that Northampton Housing Authority has a relationship with the police, and so that is a privacy issue. And then I also wanted to speak out in support of, I read about a commission that is hopefully going to be formed in support of looking at barriers to leadership for low income people, people who are black and brown, who are normally of, you know, how come we can't make it onto some of these boards? You know, what's the path, you know? And so I think it would be important to explore those barriers in our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Gwyn. Next up is Manuel.
Hello, everyone. This is Manny Pintaro. I live in 20 Hampton Avenue, Northampton with my wife. I also live in Sunderland, a proud citizen of Franklin County. So please bear with me. First of all, thanks all, everyone. Phil Castle, all my comrades out there, I love you all. Dana, Jess, Jeff, you are the best. So first, let's go to the resolution to form a select committee to stay various service. I agree with that. Please vote yes on that. And being that I was a member of Finland for almost 10 years after I graduated from military college and student at UMass, please vote a resolution to support the student loan debt cancellation. Yes, no, that's a body. Now, I'm just going to say very clearly, everybody has said everything that is on my mind. So all I want to say is when I read that, you know, the major General Luciar was actually the one that's pushing for this Motorola. You know, even Anthony is the one who's proposing it, but she's pushing it. I believe that, you know, maybe I was like Will Meyer, she will give me an audience because I've been trying to get an audience with her. Because I really wanted to talk to her. Instead of giving all this money to the police and for these cameras, why not expand the shelter on Center Street? Where we can get more people working there and we can get more hours and we can finally get some people who are on the street, a real place. I understand that the police is trying to do the job, but we are not Ferguson. We are not Baltimore. They don't need to have that kind of surveillance. And like everybody says, right now, please listen to us, listen to them. We don't need those, the police to have those cameras and, you know, and whatever affects me affects my community. So I please ask you to vote no on the resolution to give more than a thousand, five thousand to Motorola. Thank you.
Thank you, Manny. Next up is moved around Ben.
Hello, my name is Ben Brucato. I'm an assistant professor of criminology at Framingham State University and I teach at UMass Amherst. For the past decade, I've been researching police surveillance and teaching about it with my students. Dash cams were initially introduced in the 1980s and for a number of years they did not take off. They were pushed by Mothers Against Drunk Driving as a technology to collect evidence and particularly self-incriminating statements from citizens. Dash cameras took off finally once they were able to exploit the controversy surrounding the beating of Rodney King. And the community oriented police services under the DOJ established a grant program. And suddenly these technologies were rolling out all across the country. The same thing happened with body cameras where for years they were being used by a few police departments to collect evidence and incriminating information from citizens. But they really got to see their boon once they were able to exploit the killing of Michael Brown in Ferguson, Missouri. We see again and again technologies that are used to criminalize poor people, especially poor people of color that are adopted only after they can, local governments, state governments, federal governments can exploit controversy, can exploit the situations where there is a lack of accountability, saying that these technologies will provide an accountability that they're never proven that they're able to do. In fact, the research shows very conclusively that videos shot from the police perspective, whether dash cameras or body cameras do the work of helping police avoid accountability. They're intended for that purpose. They were developed for that purpose. They're marketed and adopted for that purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Mac. Mac, you have the floor.
Hi, my name is Max Rodina. I live in Ward Three in Northampton. I'm against contracting with Motorola Solutions. The record after the fact aspect of the watch guard system amounts to full-time surveillance, producing data on our community that we don't ultimately have any control over. To say that this would somehow be a move to hold police accountable rings disingenuous. It rings smoke and mirrors. And even if it was in earnest, as spoken on just now by Professor Brucato, this is not a measure that actually reduces police violence. I don't want myself or my neighbors surveilled, especially in connection with a corrupt corporation which has collaborated with ICE and with the IDF, particularly because we know that data is big money and it doesn't care about the human toll. Contracting with Motorola Solutions would be a move to invest in a future of distrust and fear for Northampton.
Thank you, Mac. Okay, next up is Ty. Ty, are you there?
Hi, yes, thank you. I'm here like many people before me for the past hour. And that's not all recorded. To say that I'm against this contract with Motorola Solutions, it's not clear to me why the city would have money to contract with them, but not enough money to like fully fund the Department of Community Care. So your investments just seem misplaced there. And yeah, like everything's, a lot of things been said before, but just as well, I don't agree with it and shouldn't happen.
Thank you, Ty. Next up is Joe. Joe, you have the floor. Is this not working? Okay, that's weird. All right. I'm going to go on to, I'm going to go to Ryan. Joe, we'll come back to you and try to figure this out. Okay, now, did I change a setting or?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, Ryan, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Ryan McChesney. I live in Ward Three B in Northampton. I am also here to state my opposition to the contract with Motorola Solutions. As many people have very eloquently said, I am concerned about the use of the data that is being collected by these cameras and all the ways in which it could be used, even if we don't think that that is the explicit purpose or goal of this data. I am concerned that this goes directly against the values of Northampton as a sanctuary city. Similar to, as Elliot was talking about, I'm a nurse practitioner in the area. I work with a lot of folks who are undocumented and I hear firsthand on a daily basis about the fear that they already experience day to day about being surveilled and about being deported, about family members of theirs who have been deported. This is already an enormous burden for these members of our community. And I am really concerned about this increasing that fear and that stress in their day to day lives. I think that this is not a good use of our money as a city. And I urge the council to take more time to look into all of the concerns that have been raised by people tonight about the use of this data. And before you approve this, this technology. So thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay. Let's try Joe again. Don't know why. All right, we're going to go to Chris.
Yes, hello. Hello to the city council and to my neighbors. Thank you all for your service tonight. My name is Chris Kitzmiller. I've been in, I've been a Northampton resident for 22 years and I live on South Street in Ward Four. I'm here tonight to express my disapproval of the police camera's expenditures. The lack of transparency around this budget item comes fresh on the heels of Boston's police department purchasing a cell site simulator with funds from civil asset forfeiture and further highlights an alarming trend in the police community. I'd like to echo Dan Kennedy's concerns about the cloud aspect of Motorola's watch guard program. By outsourcing this functionality of our policing, we are entering into a policing for profit model. Additionally, Motorola has shown themselves to be unfit stewards of this type of sensitive data as the allegations in Illinois show where they allegedly shared data in violation of state laws. Additionally, technologies like facial recognition and automated license plate scanning can be run after the fact by state and federal agencies counter to our own values as a sanctuary city. These technologies constitute warrantless dragnet surveillance and they create a permanent log of where you go and where you spend your time. Did you drive to AA? Did you miss an AA meeting? Did you spend the night at somebody else's house? Did you drive to a house of worship? This surveillance creates a chilling effect that infringes on our right to free assembly. Please block this expenditure. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, Joe, I keep trying you. I don't know why I can't unmute you. I'm going to continue down the list. Amy, Amy is next.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. I want to thank everyone who has shown up tonight and also those people who have made phone calls and emails about the issue that we're all discussing, voting down the Motorola contract. And thank you to our city councilors. I want to, I just want to bring up that it's February 3rd, 2022. We're going into our third year of public comment consistently with loud voices from our community telling our city that we do not want money invested in police, that we want money invested in our community. that we want money invested in our community in pure-led solutions, that we can find these solutions without armed people. This Motorola contract is just another significant drop in the bucket going down a road that we do not want to go down. I don't know how we can make it any clearer. We come here every time and let you know. So again, I'm reiterating everyone who's come before me, all those who spoke so beautifully, so eloquently. I also want to reiterate that the limits to public comment, both for individuals and to the 90 minutes of each meeting, is deeply troubling. To be sure, all voices are heard in our community. I really would appreciate you all reconsidering those, those limits. Thank you again, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Amy. Next up is Joanna. Joanna, welcome.
Hello, and good evening, everyone. I'm here, like many others, to urge the council to vote against the Motorola Solutions contract. As you can tell, the community, many in it are, I'm sorry, I'm from Millers Falls, Mass. I've lived in Northampton in previous years, for five years, and I frequent there very often. And I back everyone here who's come tonight and said so eloquently and so wisely that this is not what the community is asking for. Please vote no on this. And I'd also like to state the time limits that have been put into place. Again, please go back and look at that. It makes no sense to limit public comment to stop voices from being heard. Individuals in the community, especially in Northampton, come out and really care about their community being uplifted, and that's something that I've always been so drawn to and something that I find so important. And I really urge the council to look at this 90-minute cap. These meetings are important for the community, and it does harm when you limit people from being heard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, it looks like Joe has, maybe Joe will come back. All right, Shelby, we're gonna, you said you had a partner who was gonna join.
Hello, I'm Donovan Lee. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome. What was your name again?
Donovan Lee, resident of East Hampton. I'm a member of the labor force of Northampton, though. And I just want to speak tonight. Thank you. I just want to speak tonight to urge you to vote against the proposed update to the police surveillance system. Police surveillance in our community is just not good for the community, and it's not okay to normalize being surveilled by your government or the police state. Those are things that we shouldn't have to deal with, and no one should have to deal with. It's also financially and fiscally irresponsible in the middle of a time of global pandemic, ecological emergency, overstretched school systems, and colossal strain to our crumbling infrastructure systems to put any additional resources into anything besides infrastructure, education, or helping and uplifting people.
Thank you, Donovan. Okay, next is Ya Ping.
Hi, my name is Ya Ping. I live in Turner's Falls, and I have many friends and family in Northampton, spend a lot of time in Northampton. I am also here to voice my concern for Northampton's consideration of entering into a contract with Motorola Solutions. And I wanted to bring in a little bit of information about the national context for this fact that you're hearing from a lot of community members, because I know that councillor Marissa Elkins spoke in the last meeting about how she has seen dash cams be very helpful for her clients. And I know also that councillor Jim Nash sent an email out to his constituents saying that both police and many civil rights activists agree that dashboard camera systems can be an important tool for documenting police interactions with the public. And to be honest, that's just not true, and I don't know who Jim Nash is referring to as these civil rights activists, because if you do just a little bit of Googling, you'll see that across the board in every city in the country that has pushed back against these police surveillance technologies. There is a broad coalition that's built of racial justice organizations that are led by black folks, by immigrants, by undocumented people, by other people of color who have said, this tech is horrible, and it's gonna criminalize us more. Please don't, please don't agree to have this tech here. And I, I made a document that, oh, I only have 30 seconds left. I just tried to begin to list the organizations in some of these cities that are pushing back against this. And then I don't have time to even start to read through it. In New York City, there is a coalition of over 200 organizations. In Nashville, just this week, a coalition of 13 black indigenous and immigrant-led organizations pushed back against license plate readers. Literally every single city, I'd love to, I'll send this list to the councillors. You can just get a sampling of what this looks like, but it's basically not controversial amongst racial justice organizations. And so that councillors do their research before making assertions about who supports this and who doesn't.
Thank you, Ya Ping. Okay, um, let's see, it looks like we have, okay, another person, Sue Stone. Sue, you have the floor.
Great. I am a citizen of Northampton. I'm an actual taxpayer. And I would like to speak in, I would like to speak in support of the police dash cam contract. And I would also like you to consider keeping the time limit on people speaking and even further limiting people who don't live in Northampton from speaking at city council meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Looks like Joe is back.
Hello.
You have the floor.
Yeah, so I'm a resident of Northampton. I've lived here for three years. Just want to say that facial recognition is unreliable, unjust, and a threat to basic rights and safety. Facial recognition surveillance programs identify the wrong people up to 98% of the time. These errors have real-world impacts, including harassment, wrongful imprisonment, and deportation. Law enforcement officers frequently search facial recognition databases without warrants or even reasonable suspicion that you've done anything wrong. This violates the Fourth Amendment, our basic human rights. Facial recognition software programs mistake, people misidentify people of color, women, and children, supercharging discrimination and putting vulnerable people at greater risk of systemic abuse. Once our biometric information is collected and stored in government databases, it's an easy target to identify thieves or state-sponsored hackers. Successful attacks have already happened and will only grow more commonplace as government surveillance expands. Facial recognition is unlike any form of surveillance. It enables automated and ubiquitous monitoring of an entire population. It is nearly impossible to avoid. If we don't stop it from spreading, it will not be used to keep us safe, but to control and oppress us, just as it is already being used in authoritarian states. I echo the comments of people before, except the person previously of having some technical issues and hanging out with my dog in the background. He's begging for treats, but I yield my time. Thank you so much, and I hope that you don't allow these technologies to be used in our city and set a precedent for other cities and stand by this idea that we are progressive.
Thank you, Joe. Okay. Um, I am not seeing anyone else for public comment. Give that one quick look. Okay. So I'm gonna do something unusual here. I'm gonna call for a five-minute recess so I can reach out to councillor Labarge and see what's going on. So at 8:21, we will reconvene. Thank you, everybody. Or just, let's take it in five, four, three, two, one. Okay, we are back from recess. Thank you for the allowing us to have the, the quick break here while we figure out what's up with councillor Labarge for her constituents. She's working on the problem, and she thinks it has to do with the rainstorm right now that it's interfered with her internet connection. So we're hoping to get her into the meeting soon. Also, in terms of the recording, I made an error. I thought I hit the recording button on the Zoom at the start of the meeting. I, I, I got a nudge from somebody in the community, and I opened the recording. But I, just to assure everybody that NOM keeps a recording of this meeting. So there, that's, and they are actually the official keepers of the, the recording for city council. So, so there is a recording out there. And okay, now back to the agenda. So next up is announcements from councillors and the mayor. Do councillors have any announcements? Councillor Mayori.
Just to remind people that the Health Department is providing COVID booster shots, no appointment necessary at the Elks Lodge. And so go to the city's website if you'd like to just find out the hours, but I think it's just fabulous that they're making it that easy.
Thank you, councillor. Any other announcements? I would just like to add, and then, you know, just a, a word of gratitude for, to the mayor's office and to city clerk Pam Powers for once again allowing us to have some clerical help for our, our meeting is our, our, our very able administrative assistant is, is dealing with a family medical emergency. So the, the, the help from, from the mayor's office and clerk Powers is very much appreciated, and our thoughts are with, with Laura and her family. So, um, any other announcements from councillors or the mayor? Where is the mayor? She goes somewhere. There she is. All right. All right. No presentations. Okay, this brings us to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is, is pretty much items that we are going to, where they're, they're on the agenda to be voted on tonight without discussion, but any one of the councillors can request that something be removed from the agenda for further discussion. I have a feeling something like that's gonna happen tonight. But I first want to just read, go through what is on the consent agenda. There is the minutes of the January 20th city council meeting. There is item 22.012, in order to grant utility easement to National Grid for 54 Clark Street Well. There is item 22.014, in order to accept a gift for replacing sidewalk sections adjacent to 109 Main Street. There is item 22.016, in order authorizing a five-year contract for IT Service Department equipment and software. There is item 22.028, appointment to the Board of Health for referral to, this is a referral to city services for Dallas. a referral to City Services for Dallas-Duke Car A4 Sun Hill Drive in Florence. Are there any removals from the agenda? I think I saw Counselor Morton, Moulton's hand go up first. Stan.
Yes, I'd like to remove item D 22016, please.
Okay. Any other removals from the consent agenda? Okay, I see no other requests for removals. Pam, can you take the roll call on approving the consent agenda?
Nash, I just have a procedural question. Does that require a second? Does that require a second?
Oh. I suppose it does. I see Counselor Jarrett nodding. That usually means that needs to happen. So I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. What? Counselor Perry is making a motion. Do I have a second?
Wait, wait, hold on.
Go ahead.
Actually, I actually just noticed a Scrivener's error in the in the minutes. It's just a minor thing. Can I? I don't know what the process for that is. I'm looking at that.
You know what? I'll allow you to discuss it here because I'm pretty sure I know what you're discussing and I talked about it with Laura earlier.
Okay, there's there's a small error on page 16.
Yeah, it mentions a former counselor.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Yes, and that Scrivener's error has been brought to Laura's attention and she will address it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, back to a motion to approve the consent.
Now I'm making a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. And do I have a second?
Second.
Counselor Foster, seconds. Okay, there's no discussion on the consent agenda. Roll call, Pam, please.
Counselor Labarge is trying to unmute.
Sorry. Okay, that's a good interruption, too. All right. Where is she? There she, oh, she's, you know, okay. Let's see, yes, to unmute. Let's make a co-host. Well, I'm getting to learn all of the buttons on Zoom tonight, so. Counselor Labarge, you with us? I see her. Counselor Labarge.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, welcome back, Counselor Labarge.
Yes, we were trying to unmute and you wouldn't let it go through.
I, you know what? There's so many people in the room. You weren't, you weren't on the front page here, so I wasn't sure you were back.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are just about to do roll call on the consent agenda, Counselor Labarge, with one removal, which is the item relating to the the purchase of police dashboard cameras. And so Pam, can you proceed with the roll call?
Absolutely. Counselor Foster. Yes. Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Okay. The consent agenda passes and now I see Counselor Mayori has her hand raised.
Yes, President Nash, I just wanted to clarify because I think I missed it. Counselor Moulton made a motion to remove 2020 0616 from the agenda. Did we get a second on that?
No, we didn't.
Oh.
We did not get a second on that.
Okay.
I don't think removals need a second, do they?
No, it just needs one. It just.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
One counselor can request it. Okay, all right, so I didn't screw things up. Okay, that's good. All right, so, yeah, so now item 22.016, in order authorizing a five-year contract for IT Service Department Equipment and Software is up for discussion. As per our new rules, we discuss things before we figure out what we're going to do with them, especially in this case as we are now into no man's land of pulling a financial order off the consent agenda, which, per the new rules, once we've sent it there, we've sent it there for approval. So I, but I, here it is, we're, it's up for discussion and I open the floor for people's thoughts.
I believe the mayor would like to speak.
You know, the mayor is not on my screen.
I see her. Get unmute her.
Oh, my gosh.
Thank you.
Oh, boy, yeah, so this is on the floor. Mayor, what? Go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you, welcome, everybody. Thank you also to everyone who spoke at public comment. I just wanted to give a little more information about this order. First of all, it's actually not a financial order, as you just referred to it, Counselor Nash, it's it's an order for a five-year contract. But anyway, just give you a little bit more information. So I think as, I believe as the council knows, we already have in car camera systems and have had them actually for years and they've been viewed as a piece of equipment that's helpful for transparency and accurate video records of what happens with interactions and the footage can be requested and used for court cases. Our current equipment has not been functioning well or consistently and attempts to fix it with the current company have been unsuccessful and I and I think frustratingly so as as I've heard. So to kind of answer why this is an IT order, I wanted to sort of give the council a little a little bit of background. It's an IT order because all technology has been consolidated under IT now and have, it has been this way for the last few years. A little brief history, since few of you were on the council at this time, although certainly Counselor Labarge will remember this and maybe Counselor Nash as well. But before 2016, IT was spread out throughout the city. There was some centralized technology staff, but many departments had their own in-department IT or someone who handled it in the in the department. And this wasn't necessarily efficient, but really the a larger issue, I think, was that there were all kinds of compatibility issues that were happening. One department would buy software that wasn't compatible with other departments or or with software that we, the city needed to use for reporting. And then the technology people were trying to make fixes to make things work together that weren't meant to work together or to try and fix equipment that maybe they didn't even know had been purchased by departments. So there had been a study recommendation that there be a centralized IT and Director Pagon was hired in 2015 and the IT team, the IT consolidated team started in that next fiscal year and then over the course of a couple or a few years, IT was moved from the departments into the centralized IT, including the schools, which, as you can imagine, is just a huge part of IT now. So now IT oversees and vets all technology purchases for the city, including for the schools. So a little bit more about how this contract order is coming to you, as Director Pagon talked about it in the last meeting and actually Counselor Elkins did as well, because Counselor Elkins had served on the Capital Improvement Plan Committee in the fall. This was going to appear in the Capital Improvement Program for IT and would have been before you in a few weeks. Then in working on the procurement for it, Director Pagon found that doing a five-year contract would be more cost-effective and would provide better support if the system wasn't functioning well, which is exactly the issue that we've been having with the current system. So since it was no longer a one-time capital expense for equipment, it moved off the Capital Improvement Plan, which again will come to you towards, in a few weeks, towards the end of this month. So it's coming before you this way now and as a five-year contract, which is why it's before you as a contract. So that's just kind of to give a little bit more background on it. I, you know, I heard again that people, there was concern about the wording of the order and I really, I hear that and it should have been clearer and I certainly understand that concern. You know, I made sure that the director was there at the last meeting. He's also here this evening, as is Chief Casper, to answer any questions and just make sure there's open communication about it. But, you know, I agree that it should have been more descriptive and we'll make sure that they are going forward. A couple other points I just wanted to talk about. I I know the council, or I think the council at this point knows this, or many of you do, because you've been asking questions and getting answers. Neither the cameras or the software will have facial recognition capabilities. That's not something we're allowing in in this contract. In, you know, in 2019, I was a sponsor of an ordinance prohibiting the use of facial recognition systems, which which states it shall be unlawful for any city official to expend any city resources to obtain, retain access, or use any face surveillance system, and quote. So this is, this is an issue and a concern that I'm very familiar with and I feel really strongly about. We are also, I heard people talk about license plate scanning. There's also no, there'll be no license plate scanning recognition software in this. These are capabilities that won't be available because we are not adding them to this in any way and saying that we won't, we will not have them as part of this. So also, I was also a sponsor of in of the Safe City Ordinance, which affirmed and strengthened the 2014 Executive Policy Order to not honor or enforce any detainer or information request from ICE that's non-criminal and or subject to judicially issued warrant, which is things outside of our control. So that's something that I'm also feel really strongly about and am unwavering about. So I just wanted to share that with the council. And, you know, any other questions that you have? As I said, Director Pagon is here, as is Chief Casper. So, you know, we're just happy to have this conversation with you.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Gore.
Um, I just have a couple of questions based on what was heard in public comment. Is it possible to make a contract with someone other than Motorola? And and how did you come to the decision to make it with Motorola as opposed to someone else?
Um, is Director Pagon, so Director Pagon has looked at the different options out there and I think spoke to this at the last meeting. Do you? Sorry, I have a view where I can't see Director Pagon.
Let me see if I can.
Is he there? He may be the best. I hear, I see nodding, like you all see him. Yeah.
Co-host. I made him a co-host earlier and then it.
I do, I see him. He's on second.
There he is, he should be. Director Pagon, are you here?
I am.
There we go.
Okay, so good evening, everyone. Yeah, we actually, first, we we worked for over two years with the current provider to improve the system that we have, trying to overcome the challenges that we have with the system. And after those two years, we in, you know, in collaboration with the NPD Leadership and Administration, we we decided that we needed to look at all the options. We looked at three different vendors. We worked with them. We actually have a rubric that'd be happy to chair with the council on how we evaluated every single option. We gave them the opportunity to do demo to both the IT staff and the NPD Administration about how the system works. And after doing a very professional and very pointed evaluation about the features of the software and the capabilities of the software compared to the needs of Northampton PD, we found out that Motorola had two different options, one on-premise and one on-cloud that were, you know, over the capacity of the other options we had. Actually, I just just want to mention that Motorola was the only one option that had on-cloud and on-premise. Everybody else had only on-cloud. And and I'd be happy to to discuss, you know, all the process with with the council or a subcommittee about this. But, yeah, after having several, we're talking like about four, five months of discussions. This is not a decision that was made overnight. We spent about two years with the current provider and unfortunately, we were not able to get any a good responses and or a good reliable system that that could comply with the system, the needs that the PD officers have. I just want to mention that, you know, as part of our process, we look at the specific needs like being able to, you know, very quickly upload data into the server, make the data available to officers, ensure that the system was working all the time, even when it wasn't needed. But just to be sure that if an officer needed to turn on recording, it was there. And unfortunately, in as part of a discovery that we did, unfortunately, with the system we have, I would say that, you know, most of our units will work all the time, but the random failures that we had with the system, the current system, were really working against the the goals of the of the NPD Department, where, you know, we might might be working, you know, like for the last 20, 72 hours or something and then all of a sudden, the system would stop recording or the system would stop uploading the data into the server. And and that would cause a lot of trouble to the officers, you know, workflow. What we found out is that out of the three different vendors plus the current one that we evaluated, the Motorola Solutions option was the most advantageous option for us in term of the technology features that they offer and the reliability. And not only we look at, you know, what the vendor was talking to us, but we also went to different communities around Western Massachusetts and look at the system that they have already in place and look how the officers, the police officers were, how they were using the system. So we spent real numerous hours evaluating this system. This is not, I guess, an evaluation that was done like, you know, just on paper. We really look into empirical data and and we look at a number of different options of how the data would be used, how we would be protected. And and I I would have to say that among the different options that we look at in in the last seven years that I've been here, I think this process was really the most professional one that we did. We really spent a lot of time trying to evaluate every single option and ensuring that the data privacy, the data security, the high availability of the data was actually where we want it. So that's basically what I can say about the process.
Counselor Gore, did you want to do a follow-up? You good?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Counselor Jarrett.
Thank you, thank you, Director Pagon. I appreciated your presentation at the last meeting and and the rubric, the option summary rubric, you know, with the metrics, reliability, support, capabilities. I think, you know, these are important metrics, but I am thinking of a couple more, one you just mentioned, data privacy. So the question is, you know, is is the data safe? Who has access to it? Who owns it? Will the company share the data without our permission? In particular, thinking, you know, of the safety of of the undocumented community members. And I wonder if, I know, an offline approach might work better in that regard because easy access to data just makes it that much easier to to share. The other was social responsibility. You know, does the company that we're choosing act in a manner that benefits society by our community standards? And Motorola Solutions has, you know, documented collaboration with ICE and the Border Patrol, involvement in Israel and prison security and numerous city councils and universities and churches have voted to divest or not to do business with them due to these concerns. There's a American Friends Service Committee in Um, there's a American Friends Service Committee investigation. Uh, if you search for investigate AFSC Motorola Solutions, um it's quite extensive. Uh, and they do recommend that that folks divest from them because of of these concerns. So uh those two things, data privacy and social responsibility, I wonder if, you know, if those were added to the rubric, uh would we see a different uh result?
Very good questions, Counselor Jared. I I have to say that data privacy privacy was one of our uh rubric uh points. Uh, social responsibility was not one. I have to admit that was not part of our scope. We were looking more into um the technology capabilities of the system. We were not evaluating the company itself as a a social responsible. And I don't, well, let me, let me just make a parenthesis here. Uh, personally, I've been, you know, I I came to Massachusetts in mid-nineties and I've been part of a uh this community and I've been working with different organizations that work with the underrepresented immigration uh population. So I definitely would not support anything that is against that kind of population in the personal uh sense. Uh, but at the, uh my job as a CIO for the city, I I will focus mostly in the um technology uh capabilities of the of the solution that we are looking for. If um you as a city council or the mayor's office ask me to expand the rubric to include social responsibility, I'd be happy to do that. But that was not part of the of the uh rubric, definitely. Thank you very much for the question.
Okay, thank you. Um, and in terms of data data privacy, um do those questions I had about, you know, will the company share the data without our permission or knowledge? Is that is that something you can speak to?
Oh, yeah, we went through that with every company. And uh specifically about Motorola Solutions, part of their data privacy uh policy is that they will not answer any question from any agency unless we allow them to do that. And uh they would always come back to us before they can provide any information to any agency. Obviously, as as you might know, you know, judiciary uh requests might be beyond that consideration. They might might be private and not allow them to share the information with us. But as part of the data privacy um policy, they have any request, whether it's a private entity or a judiciary or um executive uh agency, they will uh reach out to us before answering. And they even go a little beyond that. They actually will um challenge the request before even challenge, before even informing us about the request just because of our um point of not sharing data with anyone. That is actually part of our request, that that we will not share information with any agency before we approve it. And that's that's part of our agreement. If we ever get, I just want to uh clarify something that is is misinformed, basically. Uh, at this point, because of the the way it works for us on the procurement process, we are working with just asking for a five-year approver, a five-year contract approver. And then after that, we will go into the terms and and conditions of the contract. We haven't get there yet in this process. We are asking the city council to approve a five-year uh contract so that we can start the process of negotiating a contract with them. So we only have a quote from Motorola Solutions and we don't have anything else uh in the process yet.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Counselor Moulton.
Uh, thank you. Uh, to follow up on that, Director Pagan, and to ask a couple of clarifying questions from your presentation of January twentieth. There is no contract with specific terms then that has been uh that has been written at this point?
No, no contract yet.
Okay. When does the existing contract expire? And and who who manufactured the current equipment that's being used uh as uh on dash as dashboard cams?
Yeah, thank you, uh Counselor Morton. This is a good question. The current provider is called Provision. And and we don't have a uh a service contract with them. We basically signed a contract with them back on two thousand thirteen, before my times in the uh IT department and before the IT department uh had responsibility for public safety software. And uh the contract didn't include annual renewals for support. So basically, we go year by year based on equipment replacement, software upgrades and service. So we don't have a a a service contract with them right now. And the name is Provision and they are based on Michigan.
When when would you anticipate that a a new contract, if it's approved, would take effect then? What's what's date are we aiming for?
Uh, we we don't have a date right now, but let's say that the five-year contract um term is approved. We will move into uh um the contract, you know, a procurement process that normally takes a couple of weeks. So we are hoping to have something in place in March first.
Something in place being a negotiated contract?
A negotiated contract by Mar- March first, yeah.
What can can you can you clarify? Uh, I I believe you said two weeks ago that the city would not actually be buying equipment, that the city would be in effect receiving a license to use this equipment. Is that is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
And at the end of five years then, what would the city? What would the city have if it decided to uh to end that contract? And and also, what specifically would happen to all the data that's been collected at the end of that five years?
So the data is owned by the city. So let's say that after five years, we decide to end the contract. Okay, that that might be an option. If if that happens, we will be able to download all the data into our servers, which that's the way we have it right now. We have a server that has all that information archived. Um, and then after that, we we might contract with somebody else and move on uh into a different system. If we decide to continue with with the same vendor, we will need to negotiate whether it's a a year-to-year contract or a another five-year contract with with the same company. And that is is pretty much the standard on any other uh, you know, cloud-based solution that we have. We we do have, let me, let me, I I'm going to make a parenthesis here just to make clear. It sounds like uh people understand that we don't have cloud-based solutions. We actually have about eighty percent of our software solutions are cloud-based. We have very little of our data hosted by by the city. So most of the data, and when I say city, remember that we are a consolidated IT team. So we really cover everything from, you know, city hall, senior center, recreation, uh all the public safety, the DPW and schools together into one into one budget. So about eighty percent of all the software solutions that we have are cloud-based. Twenty percent of them are on-premise. And we've been using cloud-based solutions for a lot of years, even before my times. Uh, the financial software system where all our financial data is hosted is cloud-based. So uh so this is not a new uh deal for us. We, you know, this is a normal business for us to to uh engage with um uh an organization that is doing cloud-based solutions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Mayory. And then Counselor Labarge will be now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Antonia, for all your work. I know this is uh you've been, sounds like you've been working a lot for a while on this. So I just wanted to try to understand, though, if um, well, first of all, our cloud services that we have in other uh locations in the city, you know, for other services aren't video-based, though. We're talking about video and possible facial recognition. That's my first question, a clarifying question. And then how will we know um how will we know if Motorola uses our data or not?
A good question. No, when I say eighty percent of our, you know, expenditure on on systems is cloud-based, I I mean data, not necessarily video. It could be just uh student information systems. It could be uh municipal data, building permits, all all that kind of stuff. You know, the document management is is eighty percent of that information is uh is on the cloud. Instead of video, so our current video system is on-premise. Is uh uh I mentioned before is the name of the provider is is Provision and uh and is hosted uh locally at the uh police department on on a hardware that we actually own and manage. And all the data is is in in, you know, in in the building, is not shared uh through cloud-based um servers. I'm sorry, I I missed the second part of your question.
Yeah, I was just wondering how we would know if Motorola did use our data. Is there a way to track that?
Okay, so let me explain a little bit of, I'm I'm going to get a little technical here. So so when when we talk about cloud, uh let's let's picture this way. So cloud-based solutions are really containers. So think about, and I'm going to make an analogy that I I've never done before, but this is the way it is. So think about a a carrier, just a a chip, okay, with a lot of containers. And every container belongs to somebody. And whatever is in that container belongs to some client of the company that is basically just moving that data. Or in this case, you know, it's data, but it could be any any other uh commodity. So the cloud-based, um, most of the cloud-based uh organizations either use Google or they use Azure or they use Amazon. Those are the three big companies. And what they do is they basically just make a container that is securely hosted by them on behalf of a client. So let's say that out of the three hundred and fifty-something municipalities that we have in Massachusetts, three hundred of them use uh Motorola Solutions. So they have a container for each one of those municipalities to hold the data. So the data is owned by us. We are the ones that control the data, how the data is uploaded, how the data is managed and how the data is shared. They don't own the data. They they don't have any right to move the data out, in and out. We are the ones and mostly, and I'm going to explain this a little bit um on a very good way, but but it takes a lot of work to do that. Basically, IT will basically just manage the way the data is going to be uploaded, who has access to it. And we create some roles to ensure that people that don't have anything to do with the data don't are not able to reach the data. And only a few members of the NPD staff will be able to manage the data. And IT will only be available, you know, to to support that. But we will not have any anything to do with editing data or moving data around or sharing data with other people. It's a decision of NPD leadership, whether the data is being shared or not. Now Motorola, as an organization, the same way as Verizon, Comcast and and the other other carriers might be, you know, so penal to get some data, they might be requested to share the data. They are in the obligation to come to us and ask whether the data can be shared or not before they do it. That that is the agreement, that's part of the agreement that we will sign with them. And and that's the way that it should work. Now, I have to say, you know, it's it's been known that in 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 some instances, they will be getting a directive from an executive office that might not be shared with us. We don't know about that. Uh, but in ninety-nine point five percent of the times, if there is a request from somebody, they are obligated to come to us before they share the data. But um in general terms, the data is not, it's not going to be shared unless we authorize it. And when I say we, I mean, you know, Chief Casper will need to authorize any sharing of the data. And I will, I will leave it there and I will, I will let Chief Casper to answer more about how data sharing happened in the law enforcement, because I, that's not my my purview.
Do you want me to answer that question or do you want to go to Counselor Labarge?
Answer it.
Okay, I wasn't sure because you had your hand up.
I can't wait for you.
Yep, so just for information sharing, I mean, information sharing, I know of no federal law. I I heard some of the people in public comment talk about how federal agencies can kind of swoop in and take information. I'm not aware of anything that allows federal agencies to do that. Um, just between other law enforcement agencies, we could have information requests just like we do for members of the public or we could have, um, there could be an investigation. People could be seeking, um, you know, reports that we have, evidence that we have, any of those sorts of things. And we would respond to uh requests for that information. If we had a subpoena, we would respond to that subpoena. And we're pretty protective of our information. And I just also want to say, in my years, we've never gotten these sorts of requests that that have been spoken about for any of our recordings that are, you know, as the mayor mentioned, we've had these units, different company, but, you know, dash cams um really since two thousand eight. And we've never gotten these sorts of requests. Um, I don't know if that alleviates or answers any of your questions, but that's just not. If you imagine, I mean, you you all drive cars or some of you drive cars. You're in the middle of a street. I mean, I know everyone's talking about facial recognition, but a a lot of what you're gathering is is traffic, right? The traffic movement and then the people who are in the car or the people that you're conversing with on the car stop, whose identity you already know. Um, so there's not, I just can't think of a lot of videos that would be of interest to federal agencies that would have kind of, you know, people walking along somewhere um that 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 would be. The other thing I would mention, just so everyone understands, is what the cloud is going to hold is not just random footage, but evidentiary footage, footage that we have already deemed to be uh either evidence in a case or um, you know, um, something called, well, we call it in our policy, alarm footage, which is footage that's gathered when the blue lights are activated on a car. So a car stop or perhaps a failure to stop or an accident, whatever it may be. So those are the incidents that are going to be in there. All the kind of random footage that's going on during the day is just overwritten um what really about within twenty-four hours uh on our current system. So there's not this wide variety up and up and up in our cloud to be um of just street footage. Uh, that's not something we want to retain. Frankly, we don't need to retain it and also it would be incredibly costly to do that because it's expensive to hold on to footage. So we don't want um stuff that we don't want.
So Counselor Labarge.
Thank you, Counselor Nash. All right, so what I'm hearing from Antonio, and I want to thank him very, very much for his presentation. Chief, what I'm hearing is that apparently, if we do go into the Motorola technology, which apparently our mayor is considering and she did a good explanation also, I'm hearing from you, chief, that apparently the state or either the federal authorities wouldn't have the legal rights to step in to borrow any kind of data from your department with the new system and the cruisers.
Thank you for that, thank you for that question. I am aware of no law that allows federal agencies to just swoop in with no case investigation, no evidence, no subpoena, to just take information that we have. And I've also never seen that happen. Just like any other agency, if they have a subpoena for information, and we are ordered to do so, then we would have to turn over information. But there would need to be a reason that that would have been issued.
Okay, so they would have a right to do that, though, correct?
If they were, the way to get a subpoena, I mean, you need to have some sort of crime or reason to believe that something occurred. So, you can't get a subpoena and say, "I just want to get a whole bunch of evidence and look at it." If it's not related to an existing event. So, you would need a court order to do that.
Okay, so another question, please. What I'm hearing is that facial recognition would not be done with the system in the cruisers?
This WatchGuard technology doesn't even have that capability. Not only would we never check that box, because it's prohibited in our community, and we are not interested in using it, it's not permitted.
Right, because we are a sanctuary city, and with the emails I've been getting, there's great concerns about this.
Yes, it's not an option with WatchGuard, Counselor. They don't even offer that technology.
Okay, I would like to speak to Antonio, please. Antonio, are you still around?
He's here.
Thank you, Counselor Nash.
I am here.
There he is.
Hi, Antonio. I have a question. I heard you said that you've been working on this for like about five months, correct?
Yeah, we started to work with Motorola Solutions back in April, actually. But the evaluation of different vendors has been, has been going for the last five, six months, yeah.
Okay, and I have concerns, because here we've had it, what, going on three weeks, going on the fourth week? Is, once you get this contract, I'm hearing it's what, the beginning of March, where you'll have that contract completed or not?
Based on experience, once we have the authorization to go on for the procurement, we have about, I would say, three to four weeks of, you know, approvals. And, you know, it will go to the auditors, it will go to the chief procurement officer to evaluate all the documentation before it goes to the mayor's office for approval. So, I would say March first, you know, beginning of March would be the time that we might have a contract signed, and then after that, obviously, we we will need to work on all the project management piece before it got implemented. We do have, right now, ten cruisers are using the Provision system. And it's, you know, it's working. We cannot stop using a system before we implement the order, so we will have to go through a process of implementation that will last a few months for having it completely implemented.
Okay, because I'm just a little bit uncomfortable here about, you know, moving quickly on this. I just feel that, I feel that there should be more communication here. I also feel that as counselors, I mean, you're looking at quite a bit of money here within the five years of having, we need, I think, more information. I think it would be something for counselors and finance and all other counselors of seeing what that contract states and what that language is. Because right now, it's very, very critical of what we're hearing from the public here in Northampton. Yes, we did get calls or people tonight from out of town, which is fine, they have the rights to go ahead and speak and so forth, they do visit our city. But I'm just feel that we need to look at the language on that contract so that we're protecting our city and protecting the people that live here in the city. To me, that is really valuable, and the transparency. That's my feelings toward this.
Yeah, I'd be happy to share any information that is requested by the city council or committees about, you know, the process, definitely. And I have to say that is, you know, before we got into different vendors, we worked for a couple of years on the current provider, trying to fix the problems we had, and unfortunately, it was not doable, and we still have an unreliable system. So, one way or the other, we need to be able to replace the system we have, and you know, if the council needs more information about how we get to that, I'd be more than happy to share all the details. What I shared with you on the presentation last couple of weeks was a summary of the rubric, but we do have, you know, a lot of data points that we look at before we made the decision, yeah.
Thank you, Antonio.
Counselor Elkins, then Counselor Perry.
I have a question for Chief Casper. Do you have an estimate of how many cases have been affected by lost data at where you didn't have the evidence to turn over?
Yeah, it's a good question, but I don't have that. It's common. We just had it happen this week. This is a common occurrence.
Like, like once a week, or, and also, how long has this been going on that you've periodically and sort of randomly had cases so that you didn't have the evidence for?
We've had significant problems with the system for, as Director Pagan mentioned, maybe two to three years. We've been having really significant problems where the wireless transfers aren't working, the audio's missing, the video's missing, a kind of a host of problems that we haven't been able to troubleshoot. I really wouldn't feel comfortable guessing on the number of cases, because I'm really not sure how many, but it's it's an ongoing issue that we were talking about weekly. And then honestly, we just kind of stopped talking about it, because it was just such a persistent problem, that we begged the IT department for help, because we have not been able to resolve it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Counselor Perry.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for filling in some information. I just have a couple of questions. And this is based off of some of the things that I read in some of the correspondence that people sent in with their concern, and it reminded me of a quote from Jurassic Park with whether, you know, you're so preoccupied, whether we should do something, or if we could do something, whether we should do it. And I was wondering if Chief Casper can maybe explain to us, and there seems to be still a number of people here, just how important this footage is for you to do your job with usages, whether, you know, people are talking about this dash cam footage just solely being for police oversight. Maybe you could explain a little bit about how you guys utilize this footage.
Thank you for that question. I rarely hear Jurassic Park quotes, so good to bring that back. I can't think of any that are applicable back at you, but so, we've had this sort of recording technology for a long time, and I don't know, if you're a resident of the community, the most common way that you're going to have contact with a police department is on a motor vehicle stop. It is the most common contact between members of the public and their police department. So, this is a way that we are able to capture a lot of those contacts. And, you know, we know what world we're living in. Things escalate, people don't believe other people. This is very commonly used footage that we have. It protects everyone involved so that there's an accurate record of the event. Our court administrator, when we first got this technology, used to track, we stopped now because it was clearly effective, but used to track operating under the influence cases, and to see what happens to these now that we have recordings. And now, we have a much higher rate of success in our impaired operator cases, DWIs, OUIs, whatever any of you may refer to them as. So, they're incredibly useful for that. You know, some folks in here mentioned that there's just kind of a lack of trust. Well, that plays out in court, too. You know, it used to be that we would be able to go to court and say what happened, and it's, people just don't believe unless they see. So, this has really been a game changer for us, and it's not just in impaired operator stops. It's if we search a car, we want to make sure that what we're pulling out of that car, people say, "Oh, yes, I see the officer pulling it out of the car." We don't want to have any concerns about how evidence got into a car or anything like that. When we have a detainee riding in the back of the car, I think most of you are aware of this, but the camera's face forward, but there's also a camera that faces into the detainee's travel area, into the backseat. So, we record the ride from the location of the arrest back to the station. When we're talking about lawsuits and people who are saying, "Well, something happened from the stop to back at the station", these have just been absolutely invaluable to protect us, also to protect members of the public. It is an accurate representation of what happened on all these different events, and we have used them so frequently, I can't even tell you, not just in court. We use them for training purposes, for new officers. We use them to review pursuits or failure to stops, you know, so we know what happened in the stop. We've used them for accidents. When Officer Knowlton was struck by an impaired operator, it was the dash cam video that showed the other car careening across the street that struck him. So, any accident that we might be involved with, there's always going to be an issue of fault, and we use these videos to look at those scenes. So, I can't tell you enough how valuable they are. We use them for many, many things. So, they help us. I know someone said, "Oh, the police are going to say it's transparency," but it truly is. It's our accountability for what happened on these calls and our transparency when we go to court or deal with complaints from the public, so we say, "This is exactly what happened." So, they are truly invaluable to our department, and right now, they are completely unreliable. And when we go to court and we say, "Oh, we don't have the recording," it looks fishy. I don't know any other way to say it. You know, "Oh, they lost the recording." We truly have, "Oh, the audio didn't work." People might accuse us or think that we turned the audio off or whatever. These problems are not, we don't, it's not professional to have inconsistency in how we're providing data to the public in these cases. So, we don't want that. We want to be able to show what we've done on a consistent basis.
Thank you, thank you very much for that. I just have a couple more things. In preparing for this today, I reached out to my sister, who was also a law enforcement officer in Baltimore. And one thing she said to me, while they don't use dash cams, she said that she believes that they are helpful, because it provides a point of view that's not tampered with, which brings me to my question to you, is that who will have access to this data? I'm assuming yourself, but, you know, just maybe an assurance for the public of who will have this data and what is done with it. There are no, you know, is my question.
Yes, thank you. So, Director Pagan may be able to answer some of the questions, but when we work out the contract, we would be able to put in there, who has access to this? And really, you can't change it, or delete it, like those permissions would only be granted, like being able to delete something would only be granted to, I don't know, maybe just me, you know, or a captain or something. But certainly, going in and modifying video or anything like that, those permissions would not be granted to the majority of our department, and those details still would need to be worked out with the director and within our own policies in the department. But certainly, we wouldn't have any way that people could go in and like tamper with recordings.
Okay. And then my last question, then, you know, I know that you said that, you know, data storage is costly. And so, I was just wondering what the average amount of time this data is stored on the cloud or the server?
Yeah, and that's actually, retention schedules and how long we hold on to data is one of the things that we're going to be working out with the IT department. Generally speaking, in our current policy, if it has evidentiary value, it's something that we burned onto a DVD, which is our current system, we're using DVDs. We take those, and we have to hold on to them through the court process, and then sixty days after that. Other sorts of recordings, I spoke about alarm recordings before, those are the ones that are activated when an officer turns on their lights, maybe it's a failure to stop or something else. Those are held on to for three years per contract. But, you know, with the cloud and with an ability to hold on to things, we are well aware that civil suits are usually a seven-year window, so we're looking at a retention schedule that might be a little longer for, you know, certain types of cases, say, in arrest, so that we would always have a record of that if there was any concern about something that happened in it. But that, we still need to work those details out, and that would be a discussion with the IT department when we make it to that.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Any other counselors with questions? Counselor Elkins, and then Counselor Moulton.
This might be kind of a joint question for Director Pagan and for Chief Casper. I know it was discussed at the initial presentation, the sort of the question of, and I believe Director Pagan used the word redaction. And I know that that raises a specter for some people in terms of what it means, or people might assume what it means in this context. So, I wonder, well, so I think my part of the question is for Chief Casper, which is, in this context, why would you need to redact video? And under what circumstances? And to Director Pagan, what are the capabilities of this tech, of this particular technology? And who would have access to that? Who would be able to do it with that? Well, so maybe it's both of both of you, so.
Well, I can start off with just generally redacting. So, right now, we redact things that we give out, reports. I know the dispatch administrator redacts audio recordings that she makes. We're not permitted to give out information. Medical information comes to mind, sometimes information about juveniles. So, say for instance, we had a motor vehicle stop with an impaired operator. Just before a field sobriety test, we might say to that operator, "Do you have any medical conditions that might impact your ability to complete this test?" If they say, "Oh, I'm diabetic," or any other thing they want to say, that would be redacted out, so it could be released, because we're obligated to maintain the medical privacy protections of those involved. You know, this software does have an ability to blur faces as well. So, you can envision something where maybe if we had a motor vehicle stop, there were children involved or something like that, that would be something else that we would be able to blur out.
I'm sorry, and before Director Pagan were to jump in, but to be clear, when you provide this evidence to the district attorney's office or defense attorneys, it is unredacted. Is that correct?
Yes, unredacted to them. And anytime we make redactions and then release a document, we document what the redaction was, just like in a regular public records request. We say, "We redacted RMV information," and we cite the public records exemption.
Okay, thank you. And I don't know if Director Pagan has anything to add to that.
I don't want, I don't have anything to add, except that redaction is seen as something like, you know, you might be messing with the data. In reality, every time that something is redacted, even on a public request, even if, you know, we do a lot of public request responses, where emails are, like, we might have three hundred emails, five hundred emails, and some of the data is protected by the public public information law, and we have to identify why it's being redacted, and then basically redact the information. As you mentioned before, so the police department has to provide information completely, you know, the way it was recorded, and then the redacted information has to be explained. And I would say that the most important case is when minors are involved, is where you have to, and redaction right now is a burden for the police department, because our current system doesn't have any reduction capabilities. So, they have to basically export the data out into an application, and then redact in the application in order to do that very time-consuming task, and is really a burden right now on their own time. We don't provide those services into the IT, but sometimes one of our IT technicians have to work with the PD staff to be able to do those kind of things, because it's not doable on the system we have. And I'm pretty sure that Chief Casper will concur with this, that it is, right now, is a very burden for the staff on the PD department to any, you know, to redact any video. Right now, it's not it's not a possibility unless it's exported out and it's included into a new application, and then it's done on a minute-by-minute basically basis. On the new systems, whether it's Motorola Solutions- On, on the new systems, whether it's Motorola Solutions or any other vendor that has the cloud based solutions. This software is, is capable of doing the reduction in a more productive way and a more efficient way.
Or more Adobe Acrobat, uh, or Adobe, uh.
Yeah, exactly. Instead of using Adobe, uh, to redact, it's something that is integrated into a system. And they can pull the, the video in the same console that they are working and, and make the reduction. Um, and, you know, redaction is, is might not be that a good word, but it's basically. Is editing the software on the way, on, on, on the video on the way that is, is protecting, you know, some people that need to be protected. Yeah.
Uh, and if I could just, uh, it, an observation, it sounds like there's, that's a lot more hands on and manual and a lot, lot more opportunity for, for whoever is, is to dealing with it. In an external, uh, uh, software to, to, um, manipulate it.
Yeah.
To somebody in, inclined to, to, to not sort of trust the process, it, it, it certainly seems much more hands on.
Yeah, it, it's more hands on and is actually more secure. Because the data is not being moved from one application to another. It's within the same application, is within the same data repository is. It's definitely, you know, transferring data when, from one application to another. It includes, uh, you know, lack of security just there.
Right. And of course, when it's done manually like that, there's the possibility that mistakes get made and something that should be redacted and a minor's face or social security number gets. Out there when it, when it shouldn't, just out of, out of mistake, right?
Yeah, there is a lot of opportunity for mistakes for, you know, uh, including information that is not proper. Or excluding information that is needed is, is definitely much better when you have an integrated system and you can redact there. You know, we that, we do reductions on a lot of other data, like, you know, when people are applying for a permit. Uh, we do reduction on that. We, we do reduction and a lot of all the, oh, um, platforms and opportunities are not. Law enforcement related and, and, and it's, it's a concept that definitely is part of, of the workflow of any other agency. Yeah.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Counselor Mayori.
Uh, just another tech inquiry. I'm trying to understand. So the software, the company markets the software is, um, being able to help choose how to police and where to police. Kind of a, you know, using AI, um, kind of choose who to police and how. Can you comment on that? I guess it's predictive policing is what they are, um, thing that, that, that the software does.
Well, let me, let me, before Chief Casper, um, gets in there. First of all, and I, I need to clarify this as clear as possible. When we look at the different solutions out there, including Moto, Motorola Solutions. We were not looking for facial recognition. We were not looking for license plate recognition. And the quote, and I think that the quote was shared with the city council members. This, the quote that we have does not include facial recognition, number one, because Motorola Solutions Washcard. Technology doesn't include facial recognition. And license plate recognition is not included because that would be an add-on to the system. The license, uh, plate recognition will be a, a separate. Um, software solution that could be integrated with Washcard, but is not part of Washcard as a native, uh, solution. So we, we specifically ask them not to include those solutions into the quote and, uh.
I think Antonio froze.
Yeah. If Motorola Solutions ever offer. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm having a, a little problem with internet. Okay, now. So if Motorola Solutions in the future offers some of the, uh, you know, facial recognition. Okay, now I'm, I'm back. I, I lost the internet for a little bit. Okay, if Motorola Solutions would, would offer, um, the facial recognition feature. Is our decision whether it's included or not. At this point it's not offered and we are not asking for it. What they do offer is the license plate recognition asset add-on to the system and we didn't ask for it. So it's not included.
But, right, but.
You want to do a follow up?
Yeah, thank you. I didn't, um, but if you're collecting video, the possibility of facial recognition is there.
Okay. So yeah, that is a good question. Um, um, Councilor Mayori. The data once is recorded and, and I want to emphasize on what Chief Casper mentioned before. The fact that the, the camera is recording data or, or might be able to record data. Um, you have to understand that the data that is uploaded into the system is the data that is set by an alarm. Meaning the, the officer either put the lights on or did, there was a crash involved or something. Something has to be, something has to happen to trigger the recording. And somebody on the, on the public, uh, comment mentioned after the fact recording, that is a confusible official. We can't, we can set up and this, this is a decision from the, from the PD leadership. Whether we want to enable the after the fact recording, which means. After 30 seconds or after 50 seconds or after 60 seconds of the event, the recording will continue or not. That is, is, is something that, um, will be uploaded into the system. So we are not uploading everything that the camera captures. It's only when the alarm goes on. And that information, uh, goes into the system. On a way of, you know, once the, the cruiser gets into the station. By wireless technology, it will go into, into the cloud. Uh, and that is, that is how it works. It's, it's, it's no other way to, you, you cannot go back and say. You know, I want to send this information out, uh, after the fact. That doesn't work like, like that.
Right. I was just confused by that idea and, and the, and the companies that were talking about the smart system. That are you opting, you know, do, do you know if they, they, they are asking you to opt in or opt out of that?
Where we opt out of, uh, license, uh, plate recognition, that was the only option that we opt out. They don't have facial recognition on the Washcard, um, solution. So we didn't have to opt out because it was not there. Um, the other thing that we need to either up it or out is the after the fact recording, which is.
Right.
How long the recording will go after the event happens.
Yeah. I guess I'm a little concerned that they don't ask you whether you want to opt in or out of their AI smart system. Because they say on the company site that they use it, but thank you. Thank you very much, Antonio.
Okay.
Counselor Moulton.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I want to circle back to two things that were asked or said earlier by counselors. One, uh, Counselor Gore asked initially if, 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 if we had to award a contract to Motorola. And, and the answer is no, because we know that there were, there were three vendors that were considered, uh, in this, uh, evaluation of, of solutions. Um, and I'm, I'm struck by Counselor Jarrett's observation that, um. The, the calculus that was used to come up with the Motorola recommendation. Uh, did not include what he described as, as social responsibility. And I think that's a good, good term for it. Uh, I think that as has been mentioned tonight, Northampton has, has established itself as a sanctuary city. It has passed ordinances that limit, uh, surveillance technology. And most recently an ordinance that prohibits, uh, the facial recognition technology from being used in Northampton. And I understand that that's not part of the, the contract that's being considered. But if we added that social responsibility component to the rubric. Uh, I wonder if, if looking at the three, the three companies that were considered, their track records, their, their, their missions. Their, uh, how they've interacted with, uh, with government law enforcement agencies would. Would change the recommendation in, 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 in evaluating which of these. It most aligns with the values that we have already established as a community.
Counselor Mayori. Um, do I have to, here, let's see.
It's me.
Okay. Oh, there you go.
Yeah. Uh, yeah. So I, uh, thank you for that, Counselor Moulton and Counselor Garrett. Uh, I was, you know what, I actually wrote down or, or put in, um, my file here, uh, my, my, on the, in the agenda. A quote from one of the, um, one of our residents who wrote to us via email. Um, but said, because it really impressed on me, that idea. It said, our business partners become part of our ecosystem in partnering, in partnering with Motorola Services. We are telling the world we trust them and we live in the ramifications of that trust. But also importantly, the money that we give them will go to developing technology that will ultimately abuse asylum seekers. Or, and you know, I would say other, you know, those are the lawsuits that are, are, you know, being filed, um, against Motorola. So I know this isn't, you know, this isn't really a referendum on efficacy of bash camps. I think we have two issues here. And, you know, although the conversation, you know, the community, community clearly wants to have the conversation about the efficacy of bash camps. And I think we need to have that. But looking at, you know, looking at what kind of companies, uh, we want to go to business with as a, as a community. You know, I think it's, is very valid here and I, I thank you for that, Counselor Moulton.
Counselor Elkins.
So a quick, uh, question, the, the three vendors, uh, it was Motorola. Would I be correct to assume that the, um, one of the other ones was Axon?
It, it was, yeah.
And, and what was the third one?
Uh, let me verify that, but I.
Get Tech.
Say again?
Oh, Get Tech. Yeah, Get Tech, yeah.
Get Tech. Um, I mean, I, I, you know, I mean, the difficulty, of course, uh, with, with any industry, communications, technology industry. That, that really focused on law enforcement is, it's, it's going to be very difficult to, to. And I know this is not going to satisfy many of the people who spoke tonight. The, but this reality, um, but that it's going to be very difficult to pass or to consider, uh, to know what to do. I mean, Axon, of course, and I had a very humorous moment where I understood it to be Axon, which didn't seem better to me. Um, and also I didn't know they were, had moved into the dash cam business, um, but, um. Uh, but you know, Axon, of course, uh, has rebranded itself and was formerly known as Taser. Um, so problematic. Um, so, um, I, I don't, and I'm not super familiar, I'm not familiar with the other company. I, I mean, I just would point out, it's, I mean, for me, what I'm really struggling with, uh, because of all the, the comments. Truly the thing I find my most persuasive is this social policy. Uh, uh, the, the, the social implications of who we're going into business with. Um, uh, you know, I am moved by that. I am concerned about that and what message it sends. Um, and, um, by the same token, I also think that we, that our community was a leader. Um, in having dash cam, um, technology. Um, and I know we heard from a couple of other defense attorneys, I'm friends with them, I respect them. I, I, I think a lot, a, a lot of them and they're, and they're, and they're, I, I don't, you know, I'm, I, I fight, we fight the good fight together. Um, that being said, um, I, 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 it has been crucial to clients being acquitted. It has been crucial to clients, uh, to identifying, and I'm not talking about necessarily specifically in Northampton, I practice all over. Um, but it's been crucial that, um, you know, and I, and, and this is key. Um, every 100% of the police reports I've ever read were by definition. Um, if they were, if I'm reading them because of a charge, were inculpatory. 100% of them. That's the whole point. That is not true of, of dash cam evidence. It's not always consistent. It doesn't always match. And, and again, I really want to emphasize, I'm not talking specifically about Northampton, I'm not talking specifically about any jurisdiction. But it, we, we find differences, we find inconsistencies. I, I think even Chief Casper would, would agree that some, you know, sometimes in OUI case. Like what we see in the, uh, in the field sobriety test is, is marginal. It's, it's a, it's a judgment call and you know, and there's a reason why we put it in front of a jury of peers and a fact finder. Um, and the dash cam has, has been vital. And more than that, I, you know, before dash cams were available, every time an officer said swerved over the yellow line. Uh, swerved, you know, swerved over the white line, every time the stop was, uh, you know, a, a tail light out. Or an improperly illuminated, um, um, uh, license plate or whatever it might be. Um, the only thing was the police report and 100% of the time. It was inculpatory and 100% of the time it described a perfectly legal constitutional by the book stop. Um, and, and, and I will say that I, and I have no idea like what percentage of, of Northampton stops and dash cam video reveal. Perfectly legal constitutional stops, ideally 100% of them will and do. Um, but I, I, I just can't emphasize enough that, that this is a vehicle and. And I'll, you know, I'll candidly say, not so much in this community, but in other communities where I practice. Um, it's, it has been the thing that has allowed me to vindicate my client's rights. It has been the thing that has allowed me to expose, um, uh, police misconduct. It has been the thing that has meant acquittals. Um, I, 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 so I can't, I, 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 I'm, I really am just a little astounded to find myself. The other thing is, is we have it. It's been here since 2007, 2008 and we can't. I, so we, whether we fix it now, whether we replace it now or we do it later, we can't have it and have it not work. So, uh, so for me, we, I, I have to say, we either, we either replace it and we fix it or we get rid of it. And I, and I, I'm, I'm not, and I know that, I know we heard from a lot of people who would certainly opt for that. And, and frankly, you know, if we'd asked 10 years ago, I think many officers would have been, uh, in favor of that as well. I mean, adopting this technology has been, uh, has, has been to mixed reviews on all sides of the, of the, of the, of the aisle. But, um, but I, for me, we, we need to either fix it. Um, or we need to get rid of it. Um, um, but I, for, for me, I'm just, I, I have, I literally have clients who, whose lives were, were changed. Um, by the availability of this evidence. Um, and so I, I, I know how I'll be voting when we finally, um, you know, get, get to the question. And, you know, I appreciate everybody's, uh, concerns, but that's, that's, that's where I stand.
Thank you, Counselor Elkins. Counselor Mayori.
Yeah, no, I, I can really hear that, um, that struggle and, and how, and it's very real. You know, your clients that were put in, and this was vital to their lives. I just think whenever we talk about that, we also have to talk about the cost. Not, there's a potential cost, but the cost that we're hearing, if you just even Google it, you know. I mean, there's people's lives being, um, you know, being destroyed by ICE. And this, this information is being, not, not being used in a above board, um, all the time. And, um, there's a systemic, um, there's a systemic problem where, um. Historically, you know, people have been profiled and, um, it's been used against, you know, communities of color. So I, I, I think that, you know, it's a duality, you know, I think both things are true, that some people's, your individuals' lives of your clients, you know. Are, are, are improved, but then we, we just have to always have in our other hand, like the potential cost and the cost that have already happened.
Counselor Foster.
Director Pagan, I actually have a question for you. Can you explain? Uh, cause you know, one of, one of the things I'm hearing from people. Uh, because, you know, one of, one of the things I'm hearing from people, and, and I've really, uh, learned a lot from, from this conversation. One of the things I'm hearing is this thought that five years is, is a long time. You know, especially given the, the concerns around the way Motorola does business. Can you explain why the five-year contract? I, I, I understand it. It provided better tech support, but could you go in the weeds on that a little bit?
Yeah, that's a, that's a very good question, and the, and the reason we are here is because of the five-year contract. So if not, we will just go through the normal procurement process. So, um, what is happening is, and this is something that relates to, um, the technology business, the technology, you know, field. Actually, I was just having a conversation with Comcast today about a line that we need to, to run, and they say we will not do it for less than five-year contract. Is, is becoming more and more common of having it at least five years of, of, uh, a contract for specifically, you know, as, as, um, you know, as a service, uh, products. Um, and the reason is, you know, these companies invest on, on software or invest on infrastructure and, and they are trying to get, you know, customers that are committed to their product. So I'm, I'm, I'm leaving a little bit of, out of the specific of, you know, what is the video system here, but most of more, more and more software companies, what they are doing is they are investing in, in cloud-based systems, which are not, you know, they are very expensive. Um, and they want to ensure that the, their customers are committed to keep the products at least four years, five years. Uh, um, and, and the reason for that is investment on any kind of system. And, you know, we are, we are working with many other companies that provide us with data systems and, um, their expectation is that we stay with them for a long time. A, a, a long-term contract is, is, um, attracted to them because they can ensure that, you know, they will have a, a, some kind of a stability on the customer base uh, before they, they move into something else. Um, we are, you know, we, we do have a lot of systems that are year by year renews, but we are finding more and more of our providers to go into five years. And, and it's, and it's been, you know, it's been changing. I've been in technology since the eighties, actually, and I've never seen this, uh, uh, trend before, but, but it's, in the last five years, it's been increasingly, um, a request from software companies to engage in long-term contracts. Uh, our benefit is that number one, we don't have to do, you know, before, and I mentioned this last time, we were thinking about some capital improvement funding in order to get a replacement for, for our system. Because, uh, the normal way to do this kind of replacement is purchase the, um, the hardware, um, at once, and they get, get a support for three years. Uh, that is getting very, very expensive. That is getting really expensive to, to, uh, to do. And, um, the good thing about having a, a, a long term is we are not investing in hardware, we are not investing on, on, uh, uh, you know, the, what I would say, the, the backend systems, which are very expensive. And basically, we have a five-year contract that at the end of the five years, we can say, okay, we are going to move into a new system and we don't have to worry about a big investment. We just have to ensure that we get another contract that will be an annual expense. Um, you know, the, the IT, uh, field, it has changed a lot in the last 10 years. Uh, and whether it's lease, uh, opportunities or, uh, long-term subscription-based opportunities that allow, you know, companies on, in agencies like ours are not really, you know, like a big budget. Uh, our budget is very limited, so we have to be sure that we spend the money on a very wise way. And, uh, having a five-year contract, we, will give us that, that, that we are not engaging right now. Let me, let me compare it with the system we have right now. So we have a system that every unit, every cruiser costs us almost $3,000 or even more when we cost, we, we add the installation. So every time something fails and, and the provider cannot fix the problem, we have to replace it. So that means that we have to budget for at least three or four units replacements every year. Um, that is a lot, you know, that's a lot of money that we don't really have on our budget, um, because we don't expect them to fail. They just fail because something happened to them and, and the company cannot respond to it. If we do a five-year contract, at least we know how much money we're going to spend every year. And we know that if something fails, they are going to replace it. So we don't have to think about adding more money to the budget because something failed. It is part of the contract to replace the hardware, to fix any issues, even to send a technician down to, to the PD department if it's needed. It's already included there. It's, there is no surprise expenses. Right now, we don't know how much money we're going to spend next year on this system, on the current system, if something fails. It, it depends on how many units stop working. So if, you know, we can predict that, but, but we don't have a, like, you know, we, we don't really know exactly how much money we're going to spend. So, so having a five-year contract would help us, you know, normalize our expenses, uh, and, and be very predictive about the expenses. And at the same time, you know, after the five-year contract, if, if we are now happy with a company, we just, a year before, we start moving into a, a different, a, a different deal. And that, you know, that would be basically the, the way to deal with it. You know, we have older systems, for example, our virtualized environment. We spent a lot of money on that environment six years ago. And we went through about the same time, about eight months of evaluation of different systems before we decided we are going to keep the same system. And it was a, a very easy process after that evaluation to just move on with the same system for, uh, replacing the virtualized environment for the whole city. Is, is, is much better when we can predict what is going to happen in the future.
Antonio and Chief Casper, I, I have a question. So I, I, I'm trying to understand, okay, so the recording starts when, you know, uh, a, a cruiser is heading up Elm Street and they, um, and could it be that, you know, they get a call to go, uh, to a certain location? Let's say it's up to Cooley Dickinson Hospital. They turn on the lights and then the recording starts then. But the thing I, I'm not wrapping my head around, because I'm trying to wrap my head around a lot here tonight, that, um, that it's also recording at the same time. So is it by turning on the lights that it's selecting, well, that's, that recording out of the overall recording that's going on throughout the shift or the, the, the daily cycle of that vehicle? When it comes back, but what's really just getting recorded up into the cloud is when the lights are on? It, can you, because Chief, you also mentioned that, that there's times where, oh, we're not saving the street footage, you know? I, so can you delineate between the two of those things?
Yep, no problem. Essentially, the systems that are in the cruisers are, they're always recording, but they're always overriding what they're recording. So if an officer went into a shift and nothing of interest happened, it would just keep recording over itself.
So it's like your DVR on your, on your television, that you ask it to record and eventually, you know, you start pushing out your older recordings.
I will believe you. I don't use a DVR. I believe you. Yes. It records over itself. So the reason it does that is because the way it's programmed right now is when you turn on the blue lights, for instance, that's what's called a triggering event. That triggers the camera to start making what we would call like a real recording, basically. And it's grabbing footage, but it goes back in time by two minutes and then makes a recording from two minutes ago and then up to now. So the reason why is if an officer, say, parked on the side of the road and witnesses a crash or a violation, you know, by the time they turn the lights on, it's gone. You wouldn't see it. So it goes back in time to capture what the officer saw prior to the lights turning on. It, that's a very important piece of evidence. So that creates a video that is, we call in our policy, like an alarm video, like an, a, a triggered video that we have, we want to record. Um, and that is what, uh, will be transferred wirelessly to the station. It, it doesn't, it fails frequently, but that's what's supposed to happen is the cruiser pulls up to the station and that video is saved. The other video will just override itself, that, the stuff that's been sitting in there just from us driving around. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I, I think it does. And that, um, and that also I want to probe into this after-the-fact or before-the-fact recording, which is kind of what, so uh, the, an event gets triggered, but what you're, but this system allows you to like go a little before the event or a little after the event, because maybe the event was going on before you triggered the system or, or continued on after the, the system was triggered. Do I have that right?
Yes, I believe you do. And we can, a, as Director Pagan mentioned, we can set what those parameters are. Typically, you know, after a, say, a motor vehicle stop, at the conclusion of the stop, as the car drives away, the video ends. Um, but if it's a, say, it's a, an arrest where we have someone in the car, we're going to want to record that drive from the stop back to the station. It has that detainee recording camera in the backseat. So, um, it kind of depends on the circumstances of, of the call, if we would run, want to record after the fact.
Okay. And, and I guess the important piece here is that, uh, uh, so cars aren't, wouldn't be riding around Northampton, creating footage of people to, you know, that, that there needs to be, uh, what is, an alarm, the blue lights need to go on. There needs to be an alarm event to, to trigger the system.
Correct. There has to be, yeah, there's, there's three different ways it can trigger. One is the blue lights are on, the other is the, uh, cruiser reaches a particular speed, uh, which is, I believe in our policy, 85 miles an hour. Um, and the other one is, um, if the officer turns it on. So, I mean, if they pulled up to something and their blue lights weren't on, but they were witnessing a, an event, those are the three ways that they can create what we would call an alarm video.
So could you go back after the fact and create an alarm video? I, I'm just saying, you know, you, you, you park your cruiser, you get out of the car, you, you go get something to eat, you know, you come, you're taking a break, you go back to your car, you're now back at the car. And, um, and then an event happens. Is, is there some recording going on then?
You, you can't go back and create a, a, an, an alarm video. But there would be the kind of residual hours that haven't been overwritten yet. So you could, and, you know, the cars are out, our fleet is out 24 hours a day. They get overwritten pretty quickly. It kind of depends on what's going on in the day, right? How, how much the car is driving, how much video is being recorded. Um, but they overwrite pretty quickly. So even if I wanted to go into a cruiser that was operated, say, two days ago and try to find something in some random video, it's most likely already gone. That's already been overwritten. And it, so it has to be an alarm video that's then transferred wirelessly. So you have a, a brief ability to go back and look at video, uh, prior to it being overwritten. If, if that's what you're asking, but you can't make that then like an alarm video.
Okay. All right, um, I'm thinking, yeah, I think that kind of covers my questions. Um, Counselor Perry.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, so this one is for Director Pagan. Um, I, I know that you said that you've been working for two years on this project, so thank you for your hard work. Um, and, and you, I'm looking at the rubric you guys had, just for everyone who's listening. It was a one, two, three, four, five, six, six-point scale, which was hardware, system capabilities, reliability, ease of use, evidence management, information and training, support and maintenance and cost. I really like the idea of going back and looking at social responsibility. I think that, uh, what everyone said is correct. Uh, you know, we are judged by the companies we do business with. My question to you, Director Pagan, is honestly, how long, uh, do you think it would take to go back and utilize social responsibility in the rubric to, to pick a company? Um, you know, I know it's been a long process. Did, did you have other companies that you kind of phased out to get to the top three? Um, and, and just how long in the process or how, how much extra work would be needed to use that rubric? Or that, uh, metric?
Yeah, good question. I just want to clarify that when I said two years, it was two years working with a current company before we even look at other companies. Um, but yeah, I, answering your question, I think that we, we could, if it's requested, um, we could go back and, you know, we have three companies. We can develop a rubric for social responsibility based on the request and, uh, I include that into the, um, in the, into the current rubric. I would not change the information we have because it's, it was, you know, developed based on, um, you know, evaluating the, the proposals and evaluating the, the demos that we got. Uh, but I can add, you know, we can add one more, um, line to the rubric. And then, you know, we will need to work with, you know, with the police department and the mayor's office to develop some questions and go back to the companies and veri- verify, you know, social responsibility on the way that Northampton defines it. Uh, so that is not an open question, but it's a very specific, um, you know, pointed, um, questions about, you know, how the companies are responsible for their own actions. And I think that if that is the request, we could do that in, I would say, three, four weeks.
Thank you. That was my question. Counselor Foster. Our Counselor Perry, were you finished? Okay. Counselor Foster.
Uh, Director Pagan, realistically, or Chief Casper, you, I'm sure you both know this. How many companies are there that make Dash Cams? Um, I'm just trying to think about, I, I, um, if we ask you to go back and expand, um, the rubric to include social responsibility, um, how much bigger will the pool of companies realistically be?
I, I have to say that I don't know that the answer to that question. I would need to verify. I know that we reached out to as many companies that were out there and we, we got three responses. Uh, but I don't know exactly whether we, we will be able to expand that search.
Yeah, so Counselor Maori first faint raising her hand and then raised it. Go ahead, Counselor.
That's my tired wave, tired raise. I'm just wondering, you know, there've been so many questions and a lot of information, uh, that we're taking in. I, I'm just thinking this might be something we really need to refer to one of our subcommittees to do it, to do diligence and give us time to absorb this information.
So I'm going to call on myself. Um, yeah, so, yeah, absorbing information is definitely part of a, a process that I need to go through. Um, also, um, but I'm, I'm wondering if there seems to be a, uh, an offer from, uh, Director Pagan to go back and, and rework things a bit. Um, so I, I guess what I'm putting out there, that it seems like we have a few directions we can go in. And also, I, I, I just want to acknowledge that there's, you know, that, um, we, we do want to make a decision on this, you know, in, in a reasonably timely manner and, and not put this off for a long time. Um, so I'm, uh, Um, so I'm, uh, the idea of referring something that's going to come back different. Um, I, but it could be, um, it could be a case of where. Um, we, we know that the IT department is going to come up with another proposal. And um, and we could have one of our committees do some outreach around this particular topic. That can then be reported back. Um, and that um, and that it would be a recognition to folks who um, are feeling like they, they want to be. Um, to have their voices heard that that could be a way to do that. So we could kind of have them both going at the same time to a point, two to three weeks. Uh, you know, from now. So um, that's, that's a thought I have. Counselors, any other ideas?
No.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes, thank you, Counselor Nash. Um, I have to say that I want to echo Counselor Mayor. I, 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 I think I'm going to feel comfortable. Knowing how I'm exactly going to vote. On what we're talking about tonight. So I really do feel that I think we need to vote on referring this out to one of the committees. And like Antonio was saying, possibly in three weeks or so. I think that information is going to be very, very critical, very critical. As counselors, we are the ones that are dealing with our constituents, not just in our words, but in the cities that we're hearing from. And I think giving Antonio that time. And having it referred to another committee is the right direction to go in.
Counselor Jared. And then Counselor Elkins.
Great. Um, first, I just wanted to thank both Chief Casper and Director Pagan for your many explanations of how this is used. Um, our city's privacy measures. I understand the need to have a reliable system that's easy to use and to have the expenses be predictable as well. Um, I, I, I think my main concern is still moving forward with this particular company. Uh, at this time, given their history and you know, that it's not a company that acts in line with our values. Um, and given their track record, I'm, I'm not sure we should trust their assurances. Um, so you know, the city of Berkeley, California has a sanctuary contract ordinance. That prohibits contracting with companies that collaborate with ICE unless an exception is granted. Um, so I, I think we should consider holding ourselves to a standard like that. And perhaps there are no other acceptable options. Um, but, and you know, we'll find that the other companies are just as terrible. Um, but I would like to understand all of the options available before I would feel comfortable moving forward. Um, so uh, yeah, you know, given doing that research would very much appreciate. And us being able to have a discussion in the committee sounds uh, good too. Um, another more specific question was, you know, there isn't just a specific contract yet. But uh, are there sample contracts that, that sort of outline? Um, what, uh, what, what they are offering or what the terms are? That, uh, uh, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jared. Counselor Elkins.
Is um, and Director Pagan, is there um? In, in the meantime, is there any sort of estimate or Band-Aid on what, if anything, can be done to nurse the current system through? Um, so that's uh, case evidence can be reliably provided to, to people charged and arrested in the meantime.
We've done everything we can. We, we have um, done a hardware upgrade, a software upgrade. We have done um. A wireless upgrade for uh, the network where that system uh. Work for uploading files. We have worked with, with the, the current vendor to bring technicians here. And look at the problematic uh, systems, we have replaced some of the systems. I think that, I think that Chief Caster has, could conclude with me that we have done everything we can. To make it more reliable and, and, and that's why we, we went out to look at other options.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Counselor Foster.
So just trying to think about a, a path forward. Um, you know, realistically, if we refer to a committee, it would, it would be city services and that wouldn't meet until the first. Um, Monday in March, so that, that's quite a ways out. Um, Director Pagan, what is, uh, and Chief Casper, maybe what, what do you think would be a realistic? Timeframe, I'm just trying to think about a path forward for council where we can really consider these. Um, important issues without also unnecessarily delaying due to meeting schedules. Um, but you know, what's kind of a realistic timeframe perhaps to, to add that, that seventh line to the rubric? Um, and to consider that and, 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 um, you know, to, to. Bring this back with, with the social responsibility piece added in.
Chief Caster, do you want to, to talk about that?
Um, yeah, I, there's not a lot of companies, I don't know how many, but there aren't many. Um, I think it's been said in here that I think we'll probably run into some similar issues that are being brought up. Because of the industry and because, I, I mean, I'm just imagining this, it's for this, it's for. Any equipment purchases that we make, we may run into um, this issue. You know, whether it's ballistic vests or, you know, whatever else we need, the leather gear we wear. Um. Yeah, it's, it's tricky in this field, so I'm not sure what it will unearth. And I don't, I don't know what the definition of social responsibility is, the rubric for it in this way. Like, I know what I use in my personal life and how I choose to spend my money, you know, I understand the, obviously, the concept of it. But I'm trying to think of what that rubric looks like of how we're plugging this. Into it, and I'm sure that'll be a further discussion that uh, the director and the mayor and, and we can have about kind of. What we're, what we're looking for and what our expectations are of these companies. Um, I, I feel comfortable saying that there's not a lot. And I think as soon as we're able to define what we're looking for, it won't take us long to do the digging on that. Um, the director mentioned three, three to four weeks, right, director, is that you feel comfortable with that as a, as a measurement? So we'd probably be able to get whatever it is we're looking for once we define what that is um, within that timeframe.
If I may add to that, um, I just want to say that. You know, we need some guidance because as Chief Caster mentioned. You know, social responsibility is, is, is pretty clear for most of us. But when we are talking about procurement, um, yeah, we need to be very clear about. What are the, the parameters? What North Hampton as a city wants to stand for is, is, are we talking about, you know, collaboration with? Some organizations worldwide, are we talking about, you know, I don't know, what, what, what is it? But what it makes a socially responsible company to deal with North Hampton. And you know, if we got the guidance within the next four to five days. You know, I think comes our, uh, because of, uh, the capacity of our team. To move forward and get, you know, gather that information. And evaluate it and present it to you as a, as part of the rubric, obviously. In addition to we, what we have already. And I'd be comfortable to meet with one of the subcommittees and, and discuss exactly every single point of our data rubric. Uh, including those points that are having defined, but you know, social responsibility and as, as, as I mentioned before. I pride myself for being an advocate for, you know, the underrepresented and, and uh. Different populations, including immigration population, you know, as a matter of fact. When I came to Massachusetts, I was treated as a, as an immigrant. I was asked for green cards, I was asked for, uh, you know, proof of citizenship. Uh, even though I was a citizen from, from birth. But you know, I, I understand the concept, I understand. You know, what are the things that are in place here, but how we ask those questions to companies is, is important. It's, it's not, it's not just, you know, are you responsible or not? We, we need to ask some tough questions about how they deal with different situations and. You know, the definition of that, I think that should come either from the mayor's office or from the city council. And not from me, definitely, I don't think from Chief Casper also. So, so, so we need some guidance on that, that's, that's.
I see your hand raised, Counselor Elkins.
So I have to say, I, I mean, this, this strikes me as an incredibly, incredibly daunting task that we're giving ourselves. Which is not to say it's not laudable and not something that I also aspire to. I'm, I don't, if it can ever be solved, I don't know how we solve it in the timeframe that we have, certainly for this contract order. I, I guess my, I guess other thing too is like, so once we decide that, if we decide that Motorola, we can't go with this contract. Do we go through and we find every piece of Motorola equipment in our? City and. And, and replace it, do, I mean. Who, do we buy our gas from Exxon? Do we, what, I mean, and I understand, I, I'm completely, absolutely. And every, I, I mean, I campaigned, I ran on the idea that we need, that, that we need to. Our decisions need to be shot through with decisions about equity and justice and uh, and the environment and every issue. But I, I gotta say, I really worry about. How we just immobilize, we just become incapacitated in our decision making. Um, unless, in the timeframes that we have to get the things done that we need to get done. Um, with this, so I, I, I mean, I'll say again, the most persuasive thing that I've heard is the real concerns about Motorola. I just, we're, we're, we're not going to be happy with what we find with other options in this. And then, and then when you start expanding it out. Um, with pretty much every other city service, it's going to be very, very difficult. So I. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know what my answer to that is, but. And I'm really glad to be a part of a group of people grappling with that, but.
Well, I, I get a call on myself real quick. Um, the. You know, the. Uh, Director Pagan was describing um, um, a, you know, containers on a ship. That's where this information is. And that kind of triggered in my head this idea of ideally, that this information would be in like safe deposit boxes. At a bank, you know, that where you got the key, you go in and you control what goes in and out of there. And that with the safe deposit box, you know, at East Hampton Savings Bank or Florence Bank or whatever. All of our great banks, that if you go in there, you, you have this sense of like, yep, that's where my important valuable stuff is. And I, I, I think that the thing we're running into is how this, this particular company. And maybe the others as well, don't have that same sense of, 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 of security. And, and, and holding what's valuable to us that, you know, our, our local banks do. And that, um, and but at the same time, we really value what it is. You know, that this data is, it's, it's super important and we really need to take care with it. So um, and, and to be depending on large corporations, that, that's kind of the world we're in. Um, as Counselor Elkins was pointing out, this is, you know, I, 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 I had these conversations. By email with folks, with you, you know, in terms of getting out, it's all on Google. You know, this massive, you know. Many, many billion dollar corporation. So um, yeah, so I, we may be creating a rubric that may not pan out. But I, I, I actually, I, I think it would be worth doing. Either way, you know, if we, if we end up with, you know, three not so great choices. We at least know, we've, know the choices from that perspective. So um, I, I'd be interested in um, the IT department adding that. That's the, that component to the, to the rubric.
Counselor, if I may, if, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, Chief, Chief, go ahead.
I was just going to ask, what, what rubric? So like that, we can get it done, but we don't know what it is, right? So we're saying, yes, we'll get it done, but we have no idea what, what, what the council is looking for. We understand the general concept, this is a very deep, deep conversation that as. Uh, other counselors have mentioned, probably could go on for a year, talking about what the best policy is for a city and purchasing and all that. And it would be incredibly disruptive, as counselors have said to other existing services that we already have and products and contracts and everything else. So I, I don't, I don't, I want to make sure it's clear for us, for Director Pagan and myself. What is it that you want from us to provide to you? So that you feel comfortable with this decision or if you need to change course? I don't know what you want.
Counselor Foster.
If I may take a brief stab, um, what I've heard expressed the most is um. Concerns about Motorola's interactions or um, potential for data breaches and interactions with ICE. That those seem to be what, um, and, and Chief Casper, you and I talked about this the other day. And you, you also wanted to assure that, that data wouldn't end up there. Um. But it seems like we might be able to come up with, um, or you know, between the mayor's office and you and, and maybe a counselor. Um, come up with a handful of, of the top concerns. Um, but it seems to me that, that, um, you know, there are concerns that Motorola may not protect the data in the way that they. Have said they would, um, and, and that, that, that feels to be a, a top concern that I've heard expressed. And you know, I, I, I actually am quite persuaded by the arguments. That as it stands now, um, that, that the existence of the dash cam um, can provide evidence that can be. Uh, useful in court, especially in defense cases. So I don't want to unnecessarily slow down the process. Um, but it seems as though there's a handful of points that, that have raised the most alarm that we could probably. Put into that rubric and as Counselor Jared, as you put it, at least then we know. Um, you know, that if we're, and you know, I, I, I know we all make those choices in our lives that are so dominated by big corporations. Um, are we, are we doing the best that we can? Or is there a company or a potential solution out there um, that is doing a little bit better?
Counselor Core.
Um, I just, I definitely want uh, us to talk about the social responsibility part of um. Working with Motorola, but it's like, I, I kind of agree with Counselor Elkins. It's like, I don't, dash cams or, or like not having it at all. Because I, I just think that. It's. It's, um. It's like. I, I just don't believe that dash cams are really that great. And I, I just think that we need to look into that more and think about if that's actually what we want to proceed with. And I know that's a whole different discussion, but I think there needs to be just some, some kind of pushback on that. About, you know, if we actually really. Like if we're looking into this as, as something that we really want to keep pursuing like this. If it's going to be a question of so many, what, which one do we deal with and how do we deal with them? And are they good or are they bad? Um, it's like, well, maybe we shouldn't be pursuing it at all, I don't know.
Counselor Mayor.
I'm just trying to think on that because I did say earlier that I think that's a conversation the community would like to have as well. And I don't know if, if we refer it um, out, if we could tease that apart. Um, and kind of figure out the direction. I, I think it's getting late and I'm concerned that we're not really going to come up with, you know, a plan tonight. And that we really need to just unpack it again where we refer it and kind of make the plan then. But maybe you all are.
But maybe you all are, um, are more energized than me.
The mayor.
So, um, so, you know, I'm, I'm hearing a few different things, but I just sort of want to reiterate what I've heard from Director Pagan and Chief Casper that, you know, um, if, if you are asking them to do something that, uh, we need a clear direction on what that is, um, and how you would like them to evaluate that.
Did I see your hand, Counselor Maori?
It's that tired raise again. No, I, I just was wondering if that's what the subcommittee could, could hash out. I mean, we're not, we're not planning to try to hash that out right now, are we?
Well, I, I had heard timeframes of five or six days. So someone said that, um, to be able to sort of meet timelines. Someone mentioned that the mayor's office would work with, with a counselor to, figure out whatever criteria were going to be used. So.
Right. Counselor Moulton.
Yeah, I agree. It needs to go to, uh, a, a subcommittee. It was mentioned city services. I also think we can make an argument for the finance committee handling it, um, as a, as a financial issue. And I, I would ask, uh, Counselor Maori, who's the chair of the finance committee, if that's something that, uh, we would like to take on, uh, when we meet Tuesday.
And Counselor Maori's thinking.
Yeah, no, I was gonna say, yes, if you, I mean, we've established it's not a financial order, but if, um, I'm fine with that. I'd, I'd love to hear what my fellow counselors, you know, I feel comfortable with. Because, yeah, I, I hear what you're saying. It's a financial issue, but it's not a financial order.
It was on our last agenda as a financial order. So that's, that's why I've been holding it in that box. Now it's just in a confusing, I don't know where to put it. All right. So I, I think the idea of referring it to a committee is, it, it seems to be something we should entertain here. I, uh, and I, I saw a really quick hand go up by Counselor Foster. Go ahead.
Counselor Barge has had her hand up.
Counselor LaBarge.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Moulton.
All right, I missed it, Counselor.
I would really encourage this to go to finance committee. And, um, to me, I think that's important. And also I think that there's a possibility it should be referred out to another committee. I mean, I'm hearing like, what, three to four weeks about deciding on a contract? So we could bring this up in finance because I'm concerned about the dollar signs on here. And not knowing exactly how we're going to solve what we've been hearing tonight from counselors on language here for our city, of protecting our city and the people living here. And I would like it to go to finance. There's no question about that. And I'd like to hear where else that you would like to send it to. I'd like the idea of one counselor meeting in the mayor's office with the chief and with Antonio, either which one, but I really feel it should go, come back to finance committee.
Counselor Foster.
I can unmute. Okay. Uh, I, given the, the timelines and schedules and calendar, uh, I'm comfortable with a referral to finance. So, um, I move referral to finance.
Second.
Okay. And, um, okay, we, a discussion on a referral to finance. Karen.
Not to unnecessarily complicate this thing that we're in, um, but I do want to clarify if we're referring to finance, what exactly we're asking the finance committee to do with that.
So I would suggest that the task we're asking finance to do is to seek, um, input on how that decision around, um, that, uh, component around social, uh, I don't want to say that, that, yeah, whatever, to put together that, that rubric for deciding, you know, the, what's the best company here? But just putting the parameters together and seeking input from folks to show up and, and share what they think it should be. Yep, that's my thought.
Thank you, Counselor Nash.
Uh, Counselor Maori, I'm sorry.
Perhaps we could, I could follow up with you about this president, but so then we would be recommending a rubric and then it would have to go to actual that process. And again, perhaps, perhaps we could just, we could follow up on that exact, on the process there if you'd like to think about that. I just want to do my due diligence as chair.
Well, I, I, yeah, I, I'm, I'm fine talking that over a little more, but I, I do think that's the task is to, to put together, you know, the parameters for both, uh, you know, the, the mayor, the chief and, um, the IT director. So, um,
Is there any other information though, that we need to? That counselors, uh, would like us to? You know, if, if, if there's any lingering questions or perhaps we've now just focusing on the rubric. But if there, I'm, I'm curious if there's uh, any other angles we need to cover, basically, if there's any dangling threads, but it sounds like. Yes, Mayor. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to call on, President, you can call on the mayor.
Um, I just, so, um, along the lines of what you were just asking, Counselor Maori, um, yes, can you ask, can, can we know what sort of the expectations are for who you would like to have be at finance? Um, and sort of what preparation would be needed for that meeting?
Counselor Maori.
I guess I would say, I was going to say that it sounds like a conversation counselors could have. But, um, I guess, I guess I need to think about it. You know, I don't know, you're asking if, if we, you need, you know, if the staff needs to. Yeah. And, um,
So I'm going to help everybody out here. Counselor Maori, you and I, let's have a discussion tomorrow about making a plan for finance and working with the mayor as to, uh, who we'd like to be there to, uh, to complete this task that we've laid out.
I, I like it. I'll be hiding in the bathroom for my kids because it's a snow day. So that's perfect.
Okay, great. Okay. So we have a motion on, on the floor to refer to finance for next Tuesday. Any more discussion?
Just for, uh, so many people here, can you, what, what time on Tuesday is the finance committee meeting?
Five thirty.
Five thirty, okay.
And just, sorry, I, I know I need to stop wearing this hat, but remember this has to get on the agenda if it's going to be discussed.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Maori, it's five o'clock. Our next meeting is at five. From then on after, it's five thirty.
I believe.
We do about that.
So we will.
I thought, um, okay.
Yes.
So I, I.
I got, yes, um, it's because Counselor Barge and I had a conversation about, uh, a meeting she had before. Um, and then we changed it back. If, if that worked for you, Counselor Barge.
Yes.
Haven't set the agenda. Okay. Five o'clock.
That allows enough time for disability commission beforehand?
Yeah, that was, that was the concern. Do we have enough time because disability? But if you think, if you're confident that five is okay, we'll keep it, we'll, we'll go for five.
I told you.
The five PM Tuesday.
Yeah, because Wayne and I worked it out, which we told you about that. So it was fine. You didn't have to change it.
Okay. So counselors, we will talk tomorrow to work out the details on posting this and getting the time straight and all of that. And, um, and we have a motion on the floor to refer to finance. Uh, any more discussion? I see, seeing none. Uh, Pam, could you take a roll call on, um, on, uh, a motion to refer this to the finance committee?
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Jared.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins. Counselor Foster.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Counselor Elkins.
I said, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. I think I muted myself for the purpose of voting.
Okay. So, um, I, so I have a question for the mayor. For the next item on the agenda, it has to do with the Whiting Street Trust Fund. Is there somebody here other than you to speak to this?
Um, yeah, Finance Director Nardi is also here to speak to, but I can as well.
Okay.
He has been waiting around for this, for this, uh, particular item.
Yeah. So I'm going to push the counselors real quick to get through this because then we can get down to, yeah, that, counselor's okay with that? Counselor Maori.
I would, I would like us to take a break, but I can wait till, um, after, um, that item, if that's the only item, if that allows. Director Nardi to, to log off.
Okay. So, um, okay. So next up on the agenda is twenty-two oh two six, in order to appropriate forty-five thousand dollars in Whiting Street Trust Funds. I'm going to read this because it's good stuff. Whereas Mr. Whiting, a successful North Hampton business person, left twenty-five thousand dollars to the city of North Hampton in its will of eighteen seventy-five with instructions that the money be used for the relief and comfort of the worthy poor, whereas the Whiting Street Fund Committee issues its annual grant application, seeking proposals from local organizations with the goal of addressing housing insecurity and homelessness. Whereas the Whiting Street Fund Committee received and reviewed the applications and has made its recommendations to the mayor. Ordered that forty-five, forty-five thousand dollars be appropriated from the interest of, in the Whiting Street Trust Funds to the following organizations. Fifteen thousand to Mana to support the operations of the community center. The community center provides a place for the unhoused to find shelter out of the weather, to access showers, laundry, a couch to rest on, clothes in a clo- clothes in a closet and electrical outlets to charge devices. The center provides a welcoming and safe indoor space for people to call their own for a time and to access harm reduction tools and connect to housing services within and beyond Mana's walls. The community center addresses the gaps in essential human services off, offered to the unhoused population and further strengthens, strengthens the collective fabric of services, which benefit the most vulnerable members of our community. These funds will help Mana to continue the community center operations, making a real difference in the lives of unhoused and thirty thousand dollars to Friends of Hampshire County Homeless Individuals, Inc. To support the collaboration project to create housing for houseless individuals with disabilities. This group of collaborators intends to purchase five Franklin Street to create housing that provides wraparound services to support the clients in stabilizing their lives while becoming and remaining housed. Services will include social, social caseworkers, regular visits by health personnel and provision of supplies, food and furnishings as needed. These funds will be used to increase housing and other resources within the city to help bring an end to houselessness. Okay. That is on the floor. Um, are there, uh, is there any discussion or with, is there any interest in going right to a motion to approve this? Counselor LaBarge.
Yes, um, I'm going to support this a hundred percent. It's, we're, I think it's fantastic about, um, what the Whiting Street Fund Committee is doing for our city and for our people who are homeless. So I am asking that, um, we look at this and take a vote on it and get this moving so we can make it happen.
Yes, Mayor.
Um, sorry, I, I would be, we're, you know, very happy to present this. I, I'm still not used to discussion before something's put on the floor. So.
I know.
Um, uh, so thank you so much for that, Counselor LaBarge. Yes. So the Whiting Street Fund Committee makes annual recommendations to the mayor for distribution of funds from, um, the Whiting Street Fund, uh, using the interest from that, that fund. Um, and they distribute funds to nonprofit agencies for the purpose of providing direct, um, assistance to low income North Hampton residents. And they make their recommendations annually, um, to one or more nonprofit agencies where they feel the funds would be well used, um, and that apply for these funds. And they, um, this year in, it, sometimes they have different, um, areas in which they're, they're looking to fund. And so, um, this year they're, they were looking towards, you know, addressing houselessness and housing insecurity. And so they have, uh, these two wonderful applications for, um, projects that, you know, we've, we've talked about the Hampshire County homeless individual, Friends of Hampshire County Homeless Individuals, uh, project on Franklin Street quite a bit. It's a really remarkable project happening. And, um, this is something that Counselor Foster has, has, uh, worked tirelessly on and can speak to very beautifully. And the, um, the, this, the community center, what Mana is calling the community center is, just to give a little bit of background, Mana has been working, um, to, a- as we are working towards finding a permanent home for our community resilience hub, they have been working to, um, provide some of the services and sort of get some of that started and, 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 and make sure that some of those needs are being met as we're looking for that permanent home. So that is what, what they're terming the community center is sort of the precursor, sort of what, um, what they're working on right now to, uh, to fill some of that need as we find that, that place that will be the, uh, community resilience hub. So these are two really wonderful, wonderful programs that, um, I, I think that you, um, will be happy to support, or I hope that you will. And, um, so as I said, the finance director can also speak to these. She worked with the fund. Um, so if there are any questions or anything that anyone would like to know about them, um, please feel free to ask.
Counselor Foster.
Uh, not a statement. Thank, thank you, Mayor Sheriff, for, um, presenting that. And just to say, of, of course, these are two really wonderful organizations that are doing tremendous work in our community. Um, and, and, um, I just wanted to bring up that this has come up, um, I think last year when the Whiting Street Trust Fund appropriations came up, that it's a holdover from the will of eighteen seventy-five with the quotes for the relief and comfort of the worthy poor. That's a really challenging phrase to read, but I just wanted to put it in the context that that is eighteen seventy-five language and, and direct from the will. It's not language that we as a council are putting out in twenty twenty-two. And these are organizations really worthy of this support.
Counselor Jared.
I don't want to cut anyone off, but, uh, if no one else is going to speak, I.
I don't wanna cut anyone off, but, uh, if no one else is going to speak, I would move to refer this to the consent agenda of our next meeting.
I second.
Any discussion? I, I just wanted to say that, that the, the, uh, what's being done with these funds was so worthy of reading the order that I just wanted to take the time to get that in, so. Okay, after seeing no further discussion, um, on the table is to, all right, it was, uh, we had a motion by Counselor Jared. Who seconded it?
I did.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, all right. With no, seeing no further discussion, um, roll call, please, Pam.
I'm sorry, uh, was a motion to place on the next meeting's consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, so Counselor Jared?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Mayori?
Yes.
Counselor Moulton?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Elkins?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Gore?
Yes.
Okay, that passes to go to the consent agenda. Okay. Ten-minute break, everybody. Well-deserved break. We'll be back at, uh, ten fifty-eight.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome back, everybody. We are in the home stretch here. Next item on the agenda is a ordinance to be referred. It's up for referral. The recommended referral destination is Legislative Matters. It could go elsewhere, but it needs to go to Legislative Matters before it comes back to council for approval. So it's item twenty-two, zero, two, four, an ordinance relative to stop signs in the Village Hill neighborhood.
Move, refer.
Oh, that was fast. Who made that?
Legislative Matters.
Counselor Maori, was there a second?
A second.
Okay, second, Counselor Perry, any discussion? Counselor Jared?
I just have a clarification. I was confused by the map. Only one stop sign is indicated as being added, but many are listed in the ordinance. Are these stop signs that already exist and just need to be codified? It doesn't have to be answered now, but by the time we get to Legislative Matters, I would like to know that.
Could I speak to that briefly, Counselor Nash?
Go for it.
Okay, now you'll have your answer. You won't have to wait. So the one new stop sign is on Village Hill Road heading north toward Higgins Way. So that's the new stop sign that came out of a traffic study the TPW did last year. These poor sightlines, and through that traffic study, it was realized that when Village Hill was developed, there are kind of all of these different pieces being developed simultaneously. And something that was overlooked was actually ordinances for any of the stop signs that are at Village Hill. So none of the stop signs at Village Hill have ordinances attached to them. So that's why there are so many in the code of ordinances. They were all supported by the traffic study. There was one intersection that could have been an all-way stop or a two-way stop, and it's remaining as is. So nothing's changing except for the addition of a stop sign on Village Hill Road traveling north.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Okay, any more discussion before referral? Okay, seeing none. Clerk Powers, can you take the role?
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Maori?
Yes.
Counsel Walton?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel Perry?
Yes.
Counsel Elkins? Counsel Foster?
Yes.
Counsel Gore?
Yes.
Counsel Jared?
Yes.
And Counsel Elkins? I think you muted.
I think she's muting herself when she thinks.
I need a vote from you, Counsel Elkins. This is a motion to refer.
She's.
I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
It looks like she's unmuted, but I don't.
Let me see if I can manually.
She's muted. There you go.
How's that?
Counsel Elkins?
She's unmuted, but she still can't.
Did your headphones die?
Oh, it's a headphone thing.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I think my AirPods just died is all. So yes.
Not used to council meetings.
They usually make a little power down sound.
All right, let's see. All right, that one's done. Now we're on to resolutions. I'm going to ask for help here if people want to read the resolutions. The first resolution is twenty-two point zero, two, three, a resolution to support, in support of student loan debt cancellation. And these are both in their introductory first readings. So Counselor Maori, you want to take a... Who's the lead sponsor here?
So we're cosponsors, so I would refer to Counsel Gore if she would like to read the resolution.
Yeah, I can read it.
Okay.
Okay, do I read the title of the resolution or just go into it?
You can... Yeah, I would read the title and then go for it.
Okay. Upon the recommendation of Counselor Jamila Gore and Counselor Rachel Maori, twenty-two point oh, two, three, a resolution in support of the cancellation of student loan debt. Whereas education is a public good benefiting all of society and the right, and a right that should be accessible to all, and whereas college tuition has risen by one hundred and three percent since nineteen eighty-seven, while median household income increased only by fourteen percent. And whereas nationally forty-two million people have federal student loan debt for a total of one point seven-three trillion, making student loan debt the second highest source of household debt after housing. And whereas fifty-five percent of Massachusetts residents have student loan debt, with the average student loan debt at thirty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-six per borrower. And whereas across the country, student loan debt also disproportionately impacts women who hold two-thirds of all student loan debt. Women take on more debt than, and then face systemic pay discrimination resulting in an additional two years to pay off student debt compared to men. And whereas these disparities hit Black women even harder with fifty-seven percent reporting financial difficulties with paying back student loans. And whereas a two thousand sixteen study found that four years after entering a bachelor's degree, the average Black graduate had approximately fifty-three thousand in debt, nearly twice the level of the average white graduate. And twenty years after taking out student loans, the average Black borrower still owes ninety-five percent of their student loan debt compared to six percent for white borrowers. And whereas eliminating student loan debt represents a moral opportunity for North Hampton to support residents, address some racial and gender wage disparities, and provide better overall health outcomes, since carrying debt is associated with negative mental and physical health outcomes such as stress, depression, general health, obesity, and mortality, in addition to negatively impacting the ability of residents to afford to stay and live in North Hampton. And whereas student loan debt cuts across all levels of education affecting borrowers who attend vocational school, technical school, beautician schools, two-year associate's degree programs, four-year undergraduate programs, graduate schools, state schools, community college, private colleges, and universities with forty percent of borrowers having not been able to complete their education and achieve a bachelor's degree. And whereas research estimates that canceling student debt would boost the national economy up to one hundred and eight billion a year and create one million jobs. And whereas the Higher Education Act of nineteen sixty-five gives the President of the United States the power to cancel all student loan debt by executive order through the compromise and settlement powers of the Department of Education. And now therefore be resolved that the City Council of North Hampton calls for the Biden administration to cancel all student debt by executive order and request that the federal government enact a plan to eliminate student debt and begin the transition to education as a public good. Be it further resolved that the administrative assistant to the city councils shall send a copy of this resolution to President Joseph Biden, Governor Charlie Baker, Senators Elizabeth Warren and Edward Markey, Representative Jim McGovern, State Senator Jill Commerford, and State Representative Lindsey Sabadosa.
Thank you, Counselor. And would the sponsors like to speak to this? You have the floor, Counselor Gore, Counselor Maori.
I'll speak to it first. So I'm personally affected by student loan debt as a Black woman. I'm disproportionately affected by student loan debt. I'm almost twenty years out of college. I still have debt. And like the resolution said, ninety-five percent of African Americans, I mean, the average Black borrower owes ninety-five percent of their student loans twenty years after college, after their education. And another study showed that one in five people over fifty have student loan debt. And student loan debt makes it impossible for people to have good credit, get loans, get cars, get housing, get advanced degrees. And I think that Biden needs to pass the student loan debt cancellation now. And I think it's urgent, especially since we've been in this pandemic. People haven't been able to pay a lot of their bills. And I think student loan is just a big burden, and it's also a burden on people's mental health as well.
Exactly.
Thank you, Counselor Gore. Counselor Maori?
Yeah, so I want to thank my cosponsor, Counselor Gore. Thank you for that. And also just quickly, folks at Zero Debt Massachusetts, Kypex, a local high school student who ran the local data analysis for us, Sherilyn Strater, Lydia Wood, and Ian Roadwalt from Western Mass Labor Federation, a coalition of more than sixty unions across Western Mass. They've passed a similar resolution recently. And so has Boston, Somerville, Cambridge, and Chelsea. I just want to, you know, I know it's late, I just want to frame it a little bit. So forty-four million Americans, and you know, the stat that really got me was the college tuition rising by one hundred and three percent while median income, household income, only by fourteen. That's really compelling. So the part of Kypex's data, student debt cancellation would save each graduating class of the five colleges seven thousand, six hundred and fifty, one hundred and forty-seven point six million dollars in student debt. This is, so you know, this is definitely part of the equation when we talk about affordability in North Hampton, which we've been talking about so much. It's really, it's not just about the rising cost of living and housing. It's also about how much we have, you know, in our bank accounts, in our pockets. So, and we, you know, the federal government is not a forgiving debt collector. When people get into trouble, you know, the interest compounds. If you're over fifty, it can threaten your social security. So, yeah, I mean, I have, I'm going to have, I have student debt, and I will have it when my oldest starts college.
Yep.
And as we, you know, we said in the resolution, women hold the majority of debt, and they only make eighty-one percent of what men make. Women of color, you know, Black women make sixty-three cents for every dollar a white man makes. So trying to pay that, it takes at least two more years on average for white women to pay this back. And this stat kind of blew my mind. Black medical graduates, medical school graduates are spending more than ten thousand dollars a year on student loan interest alone.
Yep.
And we all know we need more, you know, people of color in the medical field so that, so that patients and clients can have, you know, people they feel, you know, are representing from their community. So that one really kind of stuck with me. And I'm just going to briefly touch on the equity piece because I never really thought about this part, too, that I read about. Before the Civil Rights Act ended legal segregation in nineteen sixty-four, many, actually, most of the public colleges and universities were largely tuition-free. But the political will to subsidize higher education waned as Black, Latino, and Asian enrollment rates rose. So together with policies such as redlining, this kind of started fostering these extreme, more extreme disparities, you know, in which white, middle-class families accumulated wealth and had this generational wealth. And Black families were not, you know, were being weighed down in student loan debt and weren't able to kind of continue on the path of upward mobility. So this is a great strategy for closing, you know, helping to close the racial wealth gap, which we said, you know, spiked by fifty-seven percent between two thousand and two thousand and eighteen. Yeah, and so, yeah, so the benefits we've talked about, homeownership rates could get boosted, racial wealth gap, increased spending in our local economy. I mean, this is just a great stimulus for our economy, our federal, you know, on the larger level, on our local economy, improve better overall health outcomes. And, you know, allow young people to create businesses and further their education, start families, buy homes. At this point, only thirty-two people have ever been able to be forgiven under the Public Service Loan Forgiveness Program. And so, and in fact, so student debt is actually discouraging public service because borrowers have to take the highest wage they can find. They can't mess around with public service jobs that can't help them pay back their loan. So that's really sad to me. And so I just feel like we're kind of, you know, this is a huge issue, especially for Gen Z. And we're kind of saying one hand to young people, like, you need to get this, you know, college education to get anywhere. And we, go figure out how to pay for it. I mean, it's... And so I do think the next conversation does need to be about what, you know, how we are going to provide affordable higher education and make it into a public good, which I think it is. But I do think we do need to cancel student loan debt immediately to give a chance to, you know, for people to get an education without getting crushed, crushed by the student loan debt. And I'll just drop it there.
All right.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor LeBarge?
Yes, thank you, Counselor Nash. I want to thank Counselor Gore and Counselor Rachel Maori for this resolution. It's a very important resolution. I have friends who have been struggling, and they're in their late fifty, sixty, still paying their student loans. Four hundred dollars a month, four hundred dollars a month, some are even higher. And I even hear it from the younger ones, too, who are having difficulties even paying their rent for their apartments. And then worrying about someday, how are they going to get a mortgage to buy a home? And I think something needs to be done. I think our president really needs to support this and let everybody be able to live a comfortable life because you can't. When you've got student loans, you're trapped. You're trapped. I mean, we put both of our sons through college. It was a struggle. It was not easy. But we helped them. We helped them so that they would have a good quality of life. Is it happening now? No. No, it's not. People want an education. They're working, they're renting apartments, and they have three other people living with them to help them here in North Hampton pay their rents and try to get an education. No matter who you are, you deserve to be able to graduate from college with respect and dignity. And it's really sad to have to hear what the percentage is on this. I find it really discriminatory here that this is happening. And, but I want to thank the two sponsors for moving this forward. And I feel, and I will support this.
Thank you, Counsel LeBarge. Counsel Foster?
It was interesting, when I saw the preliminary agenda come out last week, it had the title of the resolution. And it was a little bit of waiting, like, who are the sponsors? And Counselor Gore and Counselor Maori, I, when the live agenda, when the agenda was posted with the live link to the resolution, I was like, of course. You know, I just thank you both for bringing this forward and shining a light on this issue. I think it's great. And something that I think about, that I'll just share very briefly in my own household with two women, is that the wage disparity hits us, you know, and we're two white women, but, you know, eighty-three cents on the dollar times two makes for a wage disparity. My spouse works in public service just north of fifty, and somehow magically, her public service student loan was forgiven just a couple months ago. And like, the relief, it's unbelievable. You know, but then the idea that it could be through executive order that loans could be forgiven is, through all of these statistics, it is a moral issue. And what it does is it leaves people hanging in this balance. And, you know, I don't have the stresses of many, but I'm through my own public service loan forgiveness process. And like, it was kicked back and like, you know, the queue time on the phone is hours. And to get through, knowing that there could be this thing on the other side that could actually forgive it. So, you know, even though there are these mechanisms in place, they're also really out of reach for an awful lot of people that would benefit the most from them. So thank you really for bringing this forward and shining a light on it.
Counselor Elkins?
Yes, I'd also thank you so much, Counselor Maori, Counselor, for bringing this resolution. I almost feel like I need to recuse myself from voting on it. My personal interest in the issue is so deep. I, like Karen, I'm a household of two, of two women. And we, neither of us came from means. And, you know, we put ourselves through school, finance largely through debt, put ourselves through law school, medical school. And, you know, there is no, there is no end in sight, except for what Counselor Foster just said, which is that there is some relief coming for people who are working for, in public interest in government. And I'm concerned about how disproportionately that's being meted out, you know, to folks who are working in very, in service jobs. But nonprofit hospitals, Bay State is nonprofit, so qualifies for this. So meanwhile, lots of other people are being left out in the cold. We were made a promise by President Biden. I really, he needs, he needs to, he needs to come through with this. And, of course, as your resolution states and the statistics you talked about, overwhelmingly disproportionately affecting people of color and particularly women and, and folks really struggling to pull themselves up. So I absolutely support this resolution. It hits very close to home, and I'm very glad that you brought it forward.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Counselor Perry?
Yeah, I'm just going to, you know, echo what a lot of people said. I think this resolution is important. As a person who moved to this area to go to college, and, you know, Amherst College was not cheap, and I have a lot of student loans. And contrary to popular belief, being a rapper is not as lucrative as some might frame it. So I know that I will personally do a party once my student loan debt is erased. You guys are all invited. But if there's no more comment, I would motion to move this forward to the consent agenda.
I'll second that. Counselor Jared? Now we're into discussion on the motion.
Right, point of process, is that something we need to do? That's something we do for financial orders, but I think it just will automatically, if we don't make, refer it anywhere, it would just be on the next agenda, and we would vote.
Right.
Unless we want it to go on the consent agenda rather than in the regular order of resolutions.
I agree with your interpretation.
Yes.
So as the person who seconded the motion to put it on the consent agenda, I will withdraw that.
Okay, so do I? And now, just for some clarification, would I make a motion to just go to second reading, or it doesn't even need to, how does it work? Do you need a motion?
I don't think we need a motion.
Okay.
Counselor Jared?
Yeah, unless we wanted to refer it to a committee, I think that would be the only thing we would need a motion for.
You still need to approve in first reading, right?
First reading.
Yeah, we don't do first, approve, two votes anymore, Pam. So, so we simply do an introduction, a discussion, and then we move on. So, I, so before we move on, I just want to add that, you know, I think it was nineteen eighty, I went to UMass Boston for the fall semester, and it was five hundred dollars. It was under five hundred dollars. It included, and so that was for, you know, four classes, and it included health insurance. And it speaks to what Counselor Maori was saying about how public college used to be much, much more affordable. I, I remember we had a similar piece of legislation, oh, about four years ago, where I looked up the cost of UMass Amherst back at that time. And you could attend UMass full-time and stay in a dorm, and it was like two thousand a year. That, these are numbers that blow people's minds. It's like, you just imagine, you could go to four years of UMass, and your total debt would be ten thousand dollars maybe. That, you know, that, and that was the reality for all of the, you know, for UConn, UMass, the, the community colleges. I took a semester at Norwalk Community College, and it was like a hundred and fifteen dollars. I mean, and it was great. That was one of my favorite semesters. So, yes, that, that part of, we've created in, an industry that makes money off of figuring, people trying to figure out ways that they can pay for their education. And that, and that, yeah, so I strongly support this. And I would love to see the trend where public institutions move back towards being affordable for people. And that, that you can go to college and, you know, like, that several of my colleagues have mentioned here, like, you're still paying off debt. Oh, my God, that's horrible. So, anyway, I'm going to fully support this. Next. Oh my God, that's horrible. Um, so, anyway, I, I'm gonna fully support this next week when we actually vote on it. And I wouldn't thank the, the sponsors for bringing this forward. So. All right, are we done with this one? Okay, now we're on to the next one. And, um. All right. Where's the agenda? Come here. Okay, um, Counselor Foster, you're gonna help me out here. We have item twenty-two, zero, two, seven, a resolution to form. A select committee to study barriers to service on city boards and commissions. You ready to do a little reading?
I'm ready. I, I don't have an accent prepared, but, um, you know, Bill Dwight used to do the nice, um, British accents, but I'm, I'm ready.
Heck, that was great.
Yeah. Whereas the city of Northampton currently has twenty-three boards and commissions with opportunities for one hundred and eighty-eight residents to serve. And whereas city leadership recognizes that many residents of Northampton experience structural barriers to participation in civic life. Such as lack of financial resources, adequate transportation, adequate technology and internet, and/or lack of childcare. And whereas service on boards and commissions is an opportunity for residents to make a meaningful contribution to the city of Northampton. Performing critical advisory and quasi-judicial roles. And whereas promoting structures that facilitate representation on city boards and commissions from residents. Who have historically been marginalized from participation would lend new, diverse and important voices to city boards and commissions. And whereas many residents interested in serving on city boards and commissions may need supports. Such as mentorship, financial support, technical or technological support, and/or training in order to serve. Now therefore be it ordered. That the ci- the City Council of Northampton requests that the council president and mayor jointly appoint a select committee to study barriers to service on city boards and committees. And opportunities for the city to work with residents to overcome those barriers. This committee shall present findings and recommendations for change to city council, honor before October twentieth, twenty, twenty-two, city council meeting. The committee shall be comprised of two current elected officials, three resident volunteer members of city boards or commissions. And two residents who have never or who are not currently serving on a city board or commission.
Thank you, Counselor. You wanna go first and speak to this?
Sure, thanks, Council Nash. Um, so, I, this is a, a topic that, um. Was on my mind before running for council two and a half years ago, um, just looking around and recognizing how much our city would benefit from. Opportunities for, for, um, a more diverse, uh, population to serve. Um, you know, we, we know that, uh, those who are able to serve on city boards and commissions tend to skew, um, older, uh, whiter. And, um, financially more comfortable. And, um, just before the pandemic, I think it was the February twenty-twenty city services meeting. We, we actually made, uh, the city services committee made an information request to the mayor's office to, to start to, to do a little bit of this work. To take a census of city boards and commissions, just so we could look at the data and know actually where we're starting from. And then COVID hit and, um, you know, the city really pivoted toward dealing with that. But it, it feels like this is the time, um, to take it back up again. We heard this discussion as we were looking at the, uh, Department of Community Care and the critical role an advisory board will take. Um, you know, it was brought up through the Policing Review Commission, um, you know, that, that, um. You know, just the mechanisms of serving of, of the time for meetings, um, the space, having a consistent schedule of free time for meetings, technology. That there are so many different barriers, um, to some of the people whose voices we most needed being able to serve. And, and there are real barriers. Some of those barriers, um, are, are ones that we can address. And some are, are ones that we might need to look at state law or, um, you know, other, other challenges. You know, it's, um, this isn't, uh, an easy task. But I feel like if we look ahead, um, with intention toward, um. Where we're at and where we'd like to be, we can, we can start to at least name it. And provide ourselves as a city a roadmap for what supports, uh, we can provide. Um, to help ensure that, that everybody who lives here has the opportunity to, um. You know, participate in the way decisions are made in the city, um, and, and to really be, um, in the fold. And just a process note, um, it's introduced, um, Counselor Nash and I worked together on this. And part of the reason for just having two co-sponsors rather than more, there's other counselors who I know are very interested in this. Is that we, it, it was important to me not to bring to council a completed resolution and an idea that, you know, if four sponsors bring something together. It's, it's, at, at that point, kind of changing it or molding it or making it maybe more reflective of the people serving on this body can be challenging. Um, so, to me, um, as one of the co-sponsors, um, Counselor Nash and I talked about this, but I'll let you speak for yourself. But to me, this is the start of a conversation. I think, um, actually the makeup of this committee is one of the most important conversations that we need to have. You know, I, um, it, it seems reasonable to me, one of the real challenges and something to be aware of as we. Uh, that, I certainly hope for colleague support here, but I, I think one of the, the real challenges is that the voices of the people we most need to hear from. Um, can also be the voices, um, that, um, are experiencing all of these barriers to inclusion. So, um, you know, just want to really name that dichotomy. We heard earlier from Clark Banker, um, who's, uh, working on, um, you know, grant redesigning power structures. Um, you know, they have offered assistance, um, you know, helped with some of the wording and the resolution. Um, and so there's, there's community support out there and, and I think the will and, you know, I, I hope colleagues, um, that will support really examining what voices we're hearing.
Thank you, Counselor. So, yes, I, yes, I, I, I share the, um, the intention of this. That, oh, my daughter's calling, don't do that. Um, I think she's off work, not unlike us. So, um, the, the intention of this is that I, first of all, I know that, uh, several of you are very interested in this. And that, um, and that, that one, part of the discussion is, well, who should we include? And how should we, you know, it's like, you know what? I think everybody wants to, to have a, have a say in how this, this resolution gets designed. We've laid it out here, uh, but, um, but this resolution in this process, we, we really wanted to share it with you as colleagues. And, um, and, you know, really go over this, you know, the, the language here. And, and as Counselor Foster pointed out, figuring out the, the, the makeup of the body. Um, that, that's gonna do this deliberation, this, this investigation. And, um, and I, I, you know, when I was serving on, um, ordinance review, you know, we, we, we heard about, uh, we, we discussed. We touched on this in different ways. And that I, I think going, well, you know, full-on straight at it is, is the way to do it. And that, um, uh, and, and, and I think this is, this is a discussion our, our community really wants to have. So, um, so there you go. Um, any other thoughts? Counselor Moulton, then Moul- Moulton, then Jared, then Perry.
Thank you, uh, and thank you, uh, Counselors Foster and Nash for, for bringing this forward. It's, it's a critically important measure that I think, uh, can and should have a lasting impact. On who participates in municipal government. This was, this was the top issue that the Charter Review Committee, uh, grappled with back in twenty nineteen. We did not make any recommendations around it. But, uh, in our, uh, report to the city council, we identified it as the most critical. Issue that we felt needed, needed further study. And I agree with Counselor Nash in saying that many of us have probably, uh. Dealt with it in some fashion, um, over the years. Uh, and it's, it's very important now that it be, be considered head-on. And, uh, the, this goes back at least, uh, to the, uh, twenty sixteen report. Uh, to, uh, Planning and Sustainability Department called Re-Energizing Democracy. That identified a number of the barriers that are listed in this, in this resolution. So I, uh, am very, very pleased, uh, that the council leadership has identified this as a, as a priority for this year.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counselor Jared.
Thank you. Yeah, um, I agree. Uh, thank you for bringing this forward. I've been thinking about this issue for a long time, but back before I was a counselor, I was on the Housing Partnership. And there I proposed a partnership with a nonprofit to give civic participation grants. Uh, just for, you know, the purpose of, of enabling people. That, that didn't come to pass. But, um, uh, it's, it, it was definitely a seed. And serving on the Northampton Policing Review Commission, I saw, you know, how we, many people, uh, resigned. Um, at least partially due to these structural issues. Um, and then I've heard from constituents who don't have the resources to consider serving. So I'm excited to see this come about and, and, uh, how, hope that we can move, shift this. Um, in reading over, you know, my first thought was, oh, maybe there should be one more person who has never served. But, but also I realized like, it could be hard for folks to serve because we haven't solved this problem. Um, so that, that, you know, we'll, we'll have to see, uh, but there could be that flexibility if you can find, find the folks. Uh, but the, the, the great need will be to, to survey and interview and talk with folks who wouldn't be able to serve. But would have that, that input. Um, and then I've just one minor nitpicky thing, which is, um. Where there's a couple of places where it says such as, and then it also says and/or. And I think probably if you're saying such as, you can just say and there. Um, such as mentorship, financial support, technical or technological support and training. Uh, cause it's a list of, of possible things. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jared. Always appreciate your edits. Counselor Perry?
Yes, um, again, thank you, Counselor Nash, Counselor Foster, for bringing this forward. When I was looking at the agenda, this stood out to me as some of the most important things to talk about tonight. Um, because I, I know how important representation is. You know, I'm, I'm very honored to be serving on the city council where we have, for the first time, two members of color here. Um, I think that moving forward in Northampton, this is going to be a crucial part of how we get. Uh, more representation and more viewpoints. You know, but before I became a counselor, it was inaugurated, we kind of talked about how even the job that we're doing here is almost like volunteering. For the amount of pay that we get and the time and the commitment. And so, um, you know, just if, I, I, I'm looking forward to seeing what we can do to help break down some barriers. And, and I wholeheartedly support this and I'm, I'm, I'm team this resolution right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Foster.
I did, I, I would forget to mention, um, that originally the thought was to look at, um, compensation for elected officials. As well as offering the, uh, potential for compensation for, um, those who are serving on city boards and commissions. Um, a deeper dive, I just want to, um, put out there that there is through the city charter. Um, Counselor Moulton would know this quite well, but a mechanism for every ten years, a review, um, by city charter of, um, compensation for elected officials. And that's another, um. That's something that needs to be looked at, again, with an equity lens. Um, because the stipend means different things to different people who are serving. And for some people is it rung up and for other people is a barrier to serving. And so, um, you know, that, that process is by city charter and, um, is coming due in, in the not-too-distant future. Um, so, uh, hence the, the, the switch to, to really focusing on the boards and commissions. And I think it's so important, what's so important to me is to identify these barriers rather than that, there's no statement here of, you know, we won't. More people should be serving, but it's like, how can we, how can we make it possible, um, for, for those who are interested, um, to be able to serve?
Counselor Maori, then Counselor LaBarge.
Yeah, I was thrilled to see this, um, on the agenda. And I, I know Counsel Foster has been, has been on our mind for a very long time. We've talked about it. And I'm, so I'm, I'm just so glad to take action around it. It's been a source of frustration. And I just wanted to, uh, so I'm so glad we're pursuing this. And, um, and the CES grant is amazing and really a huge, um, kind of gift for, you know, for our community. Um, and I just want to say, you know, kind of make, drawing this from some of the public comment earlier. You know, um, when we were going over the council rules, I mean, we were thinking of. You know, we're kind of thinking a little bit about, um, counselors and, and, and how they, and how they serve. And it would, it'd be great to just, even, even if you could just identify the barriers, I mean, even if you can't solve everything, but just, even if we knew what the problems were, that would be great. And so, for example, and why I referred to public comment earlier is, you know, late, super late-night meetings. Might have worked with independently wealthy, you know, re- you know, retirees who, who, who could. Had more time with, you know, to, to recover. But if we, if we really want to attract new demographics, uh, we really need to think about the working condition for counselors as well. As, as, as anyone serving on boards and commissions. And so part of the thinking, uh, in, in limiting public comment and limit, and, and, and also some of those second readings and all that. Was trying to make shorter meetings to, uh, attract, uh, new demographics. But it would, what's, what's gonna be great about this is we'll actually know, you know, this is, we're kind of guessing what the, what the barriers are. And this will really help us nail them down. So I think it's, oh, just an ideal time to do this and I am very grateful.
Counselor LaBarge.
Thank you, Counselor Nash. Um, thank you, counselors for bringing this forth. We're in dire need of this. Being a counselor myself for quite a while. I know exactly in what I hear from many, many residents, not just in Word six and all the words. A lot of people work all day. They have children. They need to find childcare, which is a big expense. It's not cheap today. You work a full-time job, you might as well give that paycheck, weekly paycheck to childcare. And a lot of people are telling me that's one reason why they will not run for counselor at all, at all. The long hours involved in the evenings is very critical, very critical. Of people who would like to run for city counselor but have to work. Some are single parents and it's very, very difficult. And if I can recall. When we have new counselors that came in, have children, the big concern was the hours. In having childcare. And it hasn't happened yet. And I think we really need to look at this because it will open the doors to get more people to come in. And run for city council. And I think we need to look at the hours. Also, I think that's critical. Especially when you have a family and you're a single parent. And I think we also need to look at what a counselor gets. As being a counselor for money compared to other cities of what they get. So I will support this and I don't know. How it's gonna work out, but I'm hoping that we can get childcare because to me that is critical. In order to get many of these men or women to come out who are single, single-family fathers, single-family mothers. And have to work in order to survive. So, thank you for bringing this forth. I really appreciate this and whatever we can do to try to make it happen is very critical.
Thank you, Counselor LaBarge.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, so, uh, Counselor Foster.
You, you might have been about to say just what I was gonna say. So we have two choices tonight. Um, is that we can just, um, do as we did with the last resolution and then it'll appear on the next agenda. If counselors want to be able to take a deeper dive into what exactly the makeup of the committee looks like, we also have the option to refer this to, um. Probably city services, uh, but we could refer, uh, community resources or city services to, if, if counselors want to have a, a larger discussion about that. Or, you know, um, if there are edits that can happen at the next meeting as well.
Counselor Jared.
Um, yeah, I, I think it's, it's really good, uh, as it is. Um, you know, may perhaps if there are minor edits, but I, I don't feel the need personally to refer it to a committee to have that discussion. Though I would certainly honor, uh, if, if that, if other folks did. If if that if other folks did.
Counselor Perry, is that it?
I'm just doing hand signals, it's late night. I I think what Counselor Jared said hits the nail on the head is that from, I I'm just reading it now, everything looks pretty good to me. And I think that one thing I've learned in this new job is that. Sorry.
Yes, thank you. Counselor Labarge, you're calling me on the phone.
Yes. My my computer went off again, went off again.
So Mary Ann, hold on.
Okay.
Yes. I know, my whole screen is blank and right now, the computer won't shut off. I'm just. So that's all right, if we go to vote, I can, at least you can hear me, correct? Yes. Yes, no, no, I can hear. Even before I called you, my whole screen is black, so something's going on outside. Okay, okay.
So Counselor Labarge's technical difficulties. Continue that her screen has gone blank and so she wasn't certain as to whether or not she was in the meeting. So hence, that's why she was calling, but her screen is blank, but she can hear us, correct? Counselor Labarge, give us a nod.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
And see you.
Yes, my whole screen is off.
It's been quite a night.
Yes, it has out here.
Okay, so. Let's see, where are we now, all right, so. Any more discussion on this?
Counselor Perry was speaking, I just don't want to.
I'm sorry, Counselor Perry, I'm.
I was I was just going to say that I agree with Counselor Jared and that what I've learned is that sometimes things. Take a lot longer than need be, and I feel like this is something that's so important, we should move it forward with expediency, so.
Great. Okay. Anybody else want to weigh in? Okay. If that's the case, then we have finished discussing this, it will be on the agenda for next week. Counselor Labarge seems to have completely gone off and she's calling me again. All right. Counselor, I'm putting you on speakerphone, you're now with the rest of the council still. Mary Ann, you there?
Yeah, I'm here, I'll tell you right now, everything is completely blank on it, I cannot hear your voices or anything.
Okay, well, you're on the phone and we're at the point of adjourning, I believe.
Okay.
So with Counselor, Counselor Labarge, I'll give you the honor of making the motion to adjourn.
Yes, I make the motion to adjourn.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Counselor Moulton has seconded, all right. There's no discussion on adjourning. City Clerk Powers, will you please take the roll?
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
She said yes.
Yes, yes.
Counselor Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Elkins?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Jerry?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes. Could you hear me?
Did you hear it, Pam? Yes.
Yes, I heard you.
Okay.
Okay, and please tell Pam, thank you, thank you for being here.
He's hearing you right now, yes, thank you very much, Pam, and thank you, Mayor for.
My honor.
I'm waiting for the tin can to hold, you know.
Concerned, it's like poltergeist, I think we have to send someone in after her.
Yeah, okay, all right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, what, Pam?
Thank you, Counselor Nash for helping.
Pam is about to say.
I was just going to ask Counselor Nash if you could just hang on for just a second, I just want to update you on a couple of things before.
Okay.
You go for the night.
Okay, that's great, okay, everybody. You are adjourned, thank you, everybody.